Good evening. Calling the meeting of the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education, a regular meeting on Thursday, December 15, 2022, to order. Um, I always do this. Yes, thank you. I always start in the wrong place, sorry. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Chumash Tongva, Fernandino, Tataviam, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. Could I please ask now my friends from PTA, Ms. Lori Little, Carol Briggs, and longtime friend Annette Field, to come to the podium and lead us in the flag salute? Or the pledge of allegiance, excuse me.
This is fun, thank you. Your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They win.
Very good, you guys were great.
Thank you, thank you especially to all the adults in the room who learned to follow the correct cadence.
That's right.
Ms. Clark, please take the roll call at this time.
Member Frittner?
Present.
Member Aga Khanian? Member Aga Khanian is absent. Clerk Weisberg?
Present.
Vice President Ferguson?
Present.
And President Tabit?
Present, thank you. Reporting on closed session, the board voted on one matter in the expulsion of student number 960022004 in a 4-0 with one absence decision. On the motion of Member Ferguson and seconded by Member Weisberg, based upon the board's review in closed session of the finding of facts and recommendations submitted by the administrative hearing panel, the board accepts, on the 4-0, one absence vote, the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel to expel student number 960022004 based on violation of education codes 48900A2 and 48915B. The board adopts the plan of rehabilitation recommended by the panel as is. And then the board sets the regular board meeting of May 18, 2023, as the date on which the board will review the student for readmission. Thank you. And that was it, the rest, everything else in closed session was for discussion purposes only. Adjustments to the agenda. I'll take that as a no, nothing. Seven items for future agendas.
I'm sorry, President Tabit, if we could move the performance up earlier?
Oh, sure, yes, most definitely. Items for future agendas? All right. Do you like to, should we do that right now before public communications? Sure, on the annual reorganization? Great. Okay, well, who do we have with our, let's see, let me jump, who do we have this evening with our young folks? Ah, thank you, Dr. Knappig.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, Board Members Superintendent Hill, the Burbank School community, and primarily our Disney School community that is here present this evening. So I'd like to go ahead and introduce our amazing, wonderful, tremendous Ms. Harris, our principal at Disney Elementary School.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight, it's an honor to be here with all of you. I am pleased to present some student performers from Disney, this is a sample of an upcoming performance we have coming at our school. I would like, are you ready, students?
Yeah.
Some of you are sitting down, some of you are standing up, that's okay, let's start with Ms. Ta's class, we have our second graders coming up to perform What a Wonderful World. They will be singing What a Wonderful World with an American sign language and with their voices as well. This little video, little video, is to show you how to sign the song What a Wonderful World. But first, I wanted to tell you a little bit about that song. Unless you guys want to learn it too. Green, red roses too. I am so sorry. Watching all of the different movements, facial expression is real, is really, it's out. Here we go. I see trees of green, red roses too. I've seen them bloom, loving you, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I see skies of blue and clouds of white, the bright blessed day, the dark sacred night, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. The colors of the rainbow, so pretty in the sky, are all snow on the faces of people going by. I see friends shaking hands, saying how they do. They're really saying, I love you. I hear babies cry, I watch them grow, they learn much more than I never knew, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Yes, I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Good job, all right. Okay, that's it for now, thank you for paying attention.
Can we give one more round of applause? Wonderful job, you can go sit with your families. And now we will bring our brand new student council, come on in.
Uh, we're gonna sing Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. Thank you so much, one more round of applause.
There you, yeah, you made it.
Not just, man, eight minutes.
There you go, we're on track.
Thank you.
Yeah, you gotta sit on your booty.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Disney, I don't know if they, and all those parents who came tonight and got to have a little Christmas spirit. And we are time for number eight, public communication on the annual reorganization of the board and election of officers. I have a few cards of people who would like to come speak. We will start with Senator Anthony Portantino, followed by Assemblymember Friedman.
Good evening, Board, and that was wonderful to listen to Disney Elementary, and apropos, given that you work at Disney, the namesake, so it's great to be here, congratulations to all of you on getting through COVID in as best we could, so I always have to say congratulations because it was an accomplishment, and you guys were all on the front lines of a very, very dire situation, so thank you for your service. We're here tonight to say thank you to Mr. Frittner for his years of service on the school board, and so I want to give my personal feelings because you're a good friend and a terrific person and a great leader of this community, and it's hard to be on a school board, as you all know, it's hard to be in education, as you all know, because, and it's nothing more important than educating our children, so with your permission, Madam Chair, can I invite Mr. Frittner down to present a certificate to him, and then I'm going to give one to you too, congratulating you on your tenure as president of the board, so would you like to do one at a time or all together? So, Mr. Frittner, if you could come on down, let's make some noise and give him a big round of applause for his service. So if I could read this as he's walking down here, "On behalf of the California State Senate, I join the Burbank Unified School District in thanking you for your unwavering support of our Burbank Schools," and I get to say "our" because I live in Burbank now, I love doing that, "our Burbank Schools during your tenure on the Board of Education, your commitment to creating a network of support to aid student growth and academic achievement is truly commendable, this recognition is a direct reflection of your leadership and service to our community, congratulations," signed Anthony Portantino, "and thank you for your service." Madam President Tabit, if you could come on down too, I want to thank you for your year, let's give it up for Char Tabit as our president this year. And again, on behalf of the California State Senate, I join the Burbank Unified School District in thanking you for your hard work and dedication to our Burbank Schools during this time as president, your tenure has been truly commendable, signed Anthony Portantino. Congrats.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And then I had to surprise our clerk, she didn't know I was going to do this, but I want to congratulate you, our recording secretary, Kimberly, see, we didn't tell you I was doing this, because we knew you would like be, you're busy clerk, and, so Kimberly, if you could come down, I just want to commend you and congratulate you on your years of service, let's give it up for Kimberly. Again, on behalf of the California State Senate, I join the Burbank Unified School District in thanking you for your 12 years of dedicated service, 12 years of dedicated service to our students, your unwavering support of Burbank is commendable, and I know you're going on to other challenges and another great accomplishment, which I'll congratulate you for at another event for that, but tonight I just want to say thank you for your service to this great district and your friendship. And then I also want to congratulate Ms. Tabit on her reelection, and Abby on her election to the school board, so I didn't want to, let's give it up to our two incoming, or reappointing and incoming board member, again, there's nothing more rewarding than working for the benefit of children, and it's our responsibility, and you two are answering the call as your three colleagues are as well, so thank you for your service, and thank you for letting me say a few words.
Thank you, Senator, it's always nice to see you. Our next speaker is Assemblymember Friedman, followed by Constantine Anthony, Vice Mayor Anthony, thank you.
Good evening. I have to say, school board meetings are a lot more fun than legislative meetings or city council meetings, those kids made my whole night, so I want to, you know, thank them, and it's really a pleasure to be with all of you here, although it's a little bit sad because we are losing Steve Frittner from the board after 10 years, and, you know, nobody runs for school board for the money, nobody runs for school board for the fame that it brings you, you don't, you would run for school board maybe if you have insomnia, need a place to go into late hours, if you like, you know, listening to people talk for a long time, if you want to do the really hard work to make sure that the budget is balanced and that kids are getting a quality education, that's when you become a school board member. I mean, there is no higher calling, as a mom of a nine-year-old in public school, I think about her experience in the school every single day, and what she's learning, what she's not learning, the experience that she has, and the people that I entrust to make sure that that happens, of course, it's the teachers and the administrators, but it's also the school board members. So what you do really is a high calling, and it is completely selfless, so I want to thank each and every one of you for your public service, it really means so much to all the parents and to all the kids, and if, if people don't tell you enough, believe me, it means a lot to Burbank, so thank you. And Steve, you have been an amazing public servant for 10 years, someone who is modest, who listens, who digs deep when he needs to dig deep, who's not afraid to make hard calls, and who always would call my office whenever Burbank needed anything to say, we need help, this is what we need, and it was never, ever about you, oh, it was always about the kids, and you've made a huge difference, so thank you. And I want to thank all of you, Char, congratulations on your reelection, thanks for doing it again, we need you, and all of you for your service, and also, Kimberly Clark, I want to thank you, and we also brought a cert for you as well, stop shaking your head, you have also done a great job, and I want to congratulate Abby, and I'm really looking forward to working with you, and, you know, thank you for stepping up, so I have a cert for you, for Steve, if you'll come down and accept it, it will be my honor to present it to you. From the California Assembly, thank you for your years of service, looking forward to everything you're going to accomplish, thank you, I don't know which way I'm supposed to be looking here.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you, thanks so much, can I give you a hug?
And Kimberly, yeah, going on to big things, congratulations to you, and if you can spin around as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Assemblymember Friedman, always also delightful to see you. Vice Mayor Constantine Anthony, sir, nice to see you, and you will be followed by Lori Little.
Thank you, President Tabit, great to see you all, hello, I don't come down here as much, as often as I would like to. I do want to start off by saying I'm not going to thank Kimberly for leaving you guys because we get her, so, so bonus for us, but you have done a great job. If you don't know, if you don't have kids in the school district or an email address, you'd know her name everywhere, you get enough, I get enough notifications about what's going on in the school district, thanks to Kimberly. Char, congratulations on your reelection, you've done some great work, I continue to see you do good work, and I hope that goes well into the future. Mr. Frittner, Steve, you and I ran at the same time in 2017 for two different positions, I got to know you very well, and I know for a fact that what you ran on in 2017 was not what you were dealt with here and now for the last few years. It is incredible to see the work that you have done, to see the work that you've managed to get done, and all of the hurdles, the difficulties of the last few years. Thank you for having run in 2017, thank you for being on this school board. I'm very humbled by your leadership, I'm appreciative of your friendship, I know I'm not an easy person to be friends with, they all know that, but I do appreciate your patience, I do appreciate and all the work that you've, you've done, I didn't bring any certificates, I don't have a staff like these guys do, so, but no, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you very much. And I do want to congratulate Abby on getting elected, now you have to deal with me, so that's your problem. Thank you all for the work that you're doing, and congratulations, Steve, on your retirement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So we will then have Lori Little, followed by Rosemary Morrison.
I had to write mine down, I can't talk off the cuff like they all did, they're much better than I am. Good evening, School Board President Tabit, Board Members, Dr. Hill, the U S D staff, and the community, I'm Lori Little, and I have had the privilege of serving as the president of Burbank Council PTA this school year, we represent 16 units in the Burbank Schools and proudly serve the students and members in the Burbank community. I'm here to I'm here tonight on behalf of all of them, and I'm not going to cry, to thank Mr. Frittner for his service to our children, families, and employees as a board member for the past five years. As tonight is his last meeting, I'm going to do something he's not fond of, and I'm going to shine the spotlight on him for just a moment. Advocacy is at the heart of everything PTA does, so it's fitting that Steve got his start in PTA. He once said that his involvement in PTA started with an article he read that stated the more involved a parent was in their child's education, the better chance they had at success. So he took himself to the PTA meeting, PTA meeting at Edison Elementary, where being one of the only dads in the room did not deter him, but further endeared him to the group of mostly moms. Steve brought the dad perspective, something that was missing and needed. He also had a financial background, which made him even more valuable, as the hardest jobs to fill on a PTA board are usually the financial ones. He followed his children through the Burbank Schools, holding many different positions, until he finally became our first male Burbank Council PTA President. We have more dads involved and holding board positions now than ever before, which was an example set by Steve. Steve is also a staunch ally for our LGBTQ students through his involvement in the Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbian and Gays PFLAG organization, and his work with Council PTA and the Burbank students to pass LGBTQ inclusiveness resolutions, first at the state and then at the national level. His passion for this cause has even shown up at a school board meeting or two. We have all watched Steve stand up to bigotry and ignorance from his position on the dais. His passion to educate and include is palpable. Steve has also dealt with extreme budget and staffing issues, and helped guide this district and its students through a pandemic and things no one could have foreseen, and most of it was uncharted territory. The sacrifices for all of these things were not made just by you. Your family has given up time with you, and has had to change priorities as well to make this happen. I know how proud they are of you, and I want to take a second to thank Mary, Nate, and Carly for everything they have done and the time they have given up to share you with the community. I know that you're not finished. There are still things that you want to do for the community, and we are looking forward to seeing what you do next. In fact, the PTA nominating committees are working now to fill their boards for the next school year. Just say the word, and I can ask someone to give you a call. But I want to say thank you for your service and tell you that your PTA family is so, so proud of you. And one last thing to Kimberly Clark, tonight being your last meeting as well, we want to thank you for your years of supporting PTA, not just as a community member, but for being our go-to person. We will miss your wisdom on all things district-related, and we wish you so much success in your new role as City's Clerk. The City's gain is most definitely the school district's loss. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Annette Fiol, and I'm here on behalf of myself. Many years ago, when I started volunteering, a very wise mentor told me that I would develop lifelong friendships with the, my fellow volunteers, and she was so right. Steve, you're one of them. I value that so much, and I want to say thank you so much for your dedication to the students of this district, for the copious amounts of time and service that you've given to this community. It's all so appreciated by everybody, and thank you for being my friend. And Kimberly, another friend, it was so nice to have worked with you through the years and developed a friendship with you, and I thank you for everything and wish you luck in your new position.
Thank you very much. Rosemary Morrison, followed by Joel Schlossman.
It's hard to come up after such lovely speaking, because you guys know I come up with nothing. Good evening. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah. You're very welcome. Steve, I'm going to miss you. It's been a pleasure. Every time I came up here and yelled, I never, I always felt heard. And these last couple of months, just being closer to you in proximity because of, you know, the election, it just, I, thank you. You will be missed. I don't know why I voted for Kimberly. I did not know she was going to leave. I really didn't. I did not think it was a position that she would leave. And I'm very happy that she's moving, you know, up and doing what she really wants to do, and that she won. But we got to know each other a little bit more during quarantine, and I will tell you that your email correspondence to me through some of, through George Floyd, through a lot of the stuff, just so I can get my comments in, I honestly appreciate that, and that's something that's going to stick with me, because I've, I really felt heard and seen, and you're trying really hard, and I saw you do that for a lot of other people. But I know for me, that touched me, and I cannot wait to see what you do in the city. I'll let that go. I love you. I know, and I didn't, I told, Abby, I told Abby, I was going to call her Emily, Abby, I told Abby I was going to yell at her for the first night. I didn't know I was doing public comments before they got to swear her in. But, and this is not for you, Steve, because, where is the emergency bin? It's still not there. I was on campus, and I was like, oh my gosh, it's not here. And it really does. I don't know who else gets scared and nervous about it, but this is a fear for me as a parent, that an emergency will happen, and my kid cannot get the assistance needed. And I was told it was going to happen, and I think I was here like two months ago. I haven't been here a while, y'all know that. And it's still not there. And I didn't want to wait for the new year, so I'm here, even though I'm like exhausted. So I would like a timeline on when that's coming, and if it's not going to happen tonight, can I get communication about that? And then I noticed the trees. Oh, dear Lord. Who's going to clean up those flowers of those trees that bloom? That's just, who picked that? Actually, I know who picked it. Did Larry pick? I'm sorry. I don't know why we picked those trees, and I'd like to know who picked the trees that are going to go in the planter, and why did we pick flowering plants that are going to probably bring lots of bees to a campus that already has a bee problem before we cut down all of our trees. That's it. I did want to say that. And my, please give me an answer about the emergency bin. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Do you have time? No, I left.
And my last card is for Mr. Joel Schlossman.
Congratulations. Good evening, everybody, once again. When it comes time to reorganization, I want you to consider not advancing Ms. Weisberg for the following reasons. You know, she doesn't give her full attention to speakers. She's busy texting, emailing. I know it, because she's, I went home and sent her an email once, and she answered me during the meeting. And that's kind of a clue that she's not paying attention. She has a history of labeling you if you don't, if you say or don't agree with, with her position on something. She demonstrates that her mind is made up, you know, without considering the input from speakers, and that's troubling to me. You're supposed to have an open mind up here. It should be, you know, advancing to Vice President or Secretary, whatever you want to call it. It shouldn't be automatic. It should, you should show ability, and I think that Ms. Weisberg is missing that ability. You know, she took a loyalty oath to the United States of America, yet she does not stand for the flag salute, and she did not stand tonight for the flag salute. Is there a reason why we have the flag here? Why does the flag fly at every school and in every classroom, yet Ms. Weisberg is a very poor example by sitting down and not rising? Maybe it's fashionable now to be un-American and unpatriotic. We have the Vice Mayor here, and he had, he has said that, for example, you remember 9/11? Al Qaeda is not responsible for 9/11. And when I asked him at a public meeting directly, he said, I said, who's responsible? He said, all of us are responsible. So that's the kind of thing that it's troubling to me to have elected officials who are, who are so blatantly, you know, unpatriotic. Now, I've only got a few minutes here. She's going to give you a big, long spiel about how I'm wrong, and how she's extra patriotic for sitting on her ass, and I disagree with that. You know, she forgets that about 82 years ago this month, a felon named Hirohito, in December, a day that will live in infamy, we were attacked. And in the harbor over in Hawaii are still men on active duty at the bottom of the Arizona, and she won't rise for this. There's a felon in Germany, you know, we stopped him, too. Patriotic Americans gave their lives to stop him. Ms. Weisberg won't acknowledge that. Today, as I speak, you're looking confused. You always do that. There's over 2,300,000 men in the United States military, serving us today, 24/7, seven days a week, 365 a year, and you won't acknowledge that. You won't stand for the flag salute. It's very unpatriotic, and I'm not the only one who thinks this way. You know, I've said my piece here. I've said it before, you know. If you need a Vice President, give it to Aga Khanian. Give it to this lady right here. She's more deserving. So please exclude her, Ms. Weisberg, from consideration for any position of service.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. That is the last card I have on annual reorganization and election of officers. So we will move to 9A, the recognition of outgoing board members. Okay. Mr. Frittner, you are our outgoing board member at this time. So the board has, I don't know, has come with a plaque thanking you for your terms of service to the district, to the children of this district, to the parents, to the community, working with our staff and all of us. Oh, I didn't think I'd cry. Like Lori Little said, you have become a friend of mine and someone that I leaned on and looked forward to sharing thoughts and ideas with, and I, for one, will greatly miss your presence here. And although I know you'll go out into the community and do wonderful things and help in all kinds of ways, because that's who you are, a kind, giving human being, and I have so appreciated that. I've also made a great new friend in Mary, and she's my breakfast-go-downtown-to-my-candy friend, and I enjoy your entire family. So on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your terms of service. You always come prepared for whatever we're celebrating with your tie or whatever, so your flowers now match from us as well. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and best of luck to you in whatever pathway you choose to take going forward. Greatly appreciate it. And I hope that was, oh, thank you for that. And that means now it's 9B, time for your
Can we also say some comments?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you for reminding me. Also, comments from my fellow board members on.
Either way, I'll, I'll, I'll start. To know Steve Frittner is to know a man of deep patience, deep passion, and is, is certainly a dad that I certainly hope to be like one day. We have passionately disagreed, but I know and I appreciate your heart so much, and my love for you has no bounds through it all. I will never forget how excited I was when you got elected. I will never forget going to, going to CSBA and you teaching me about how to adopt. And that meant the world to me, because that's someday how I want to build my family. Our passion runs deep for these issues, and we always have, but I respect you. You have been a board member of consequence, and as a leader who has been here your entire time, I've seen how this has changed you, how it's changed me. Leading through a pandemic is an unspoken terror, frankly, on any local leader, and through hell, we kept kids first, and you never backed down in the face of incredible opposition at times, and kept kids central, I believe, throughout your time. I will certainly miss you up here in many ways. Other ways where we disagreed, not so much, but, but, but who you are as a person, our kids were well taken care of by this man. And for the rest of your life and the rest of mine, I will tell that story. And where we will continue to disagree, we'll continue to rib each other and disagree. But I hope that we will continue to serve and take on things together outside these roles, and continue to be friends for years to come. Your family is so incredible and beautiful and amazing, and they've become a part of our broader family here in the Burbank Unified School District. They, too, served along with you in many different ways, including Philippe, your amazing dog, but truly a model for the kind of life I would love. And I wish you the best in, in your board retirement, but I will be harassing you shortly to hopefully bring you back into the fold in one way, shape, or form. And I love you very much.
I'll keep this relatively short, because emotions are the worst. So I think we met at PFLAG meetings, if I'm not mistaken, and you were really gracious when I was considering running to spend some time talking with me about it, to echo a little bit of what Vice President Ferguson said, your patience is commendable and a great lesson for me, as is the moments, as are the moments that you choose to speak up and get angry, which I think are of equal import. I've learned a lot from you about what it means to be a true public servant, and to put the needs of the many ahead of, ahead of the needs of the few. We've suffered through COVID together. We've suffered through being Bears fans together, which is perhaps the greatest, the greatest pain. But through it all, I've just learned an enormous amount from you, not just about the logistics of what it means to be on board, but also the logistics of what it means to be a human on board, and to defend the things that matter to you, even when people don't even when people don't disagree or don't agree with you. So I'm going to take all of that with me. You're still going to see me, still stuck with us. I look forward to learning many more lessons from you. And like I said, you get a card with more mushy stuff in the mail. But I'm just deeply grateful to you for the moments that we agreed and the moments in which we disagreed. And I think perhaps one of the, the things I'll take with me the most is the strength you showed when you apologized in moments where you knew you were wrong. That's a really difficult thing for anybody to do. I think it's an amazing thing to model for us and amazing, amazing thing to model for our students. So I'm, I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful for you.
Thank you very much for your time. Now it's your turn.
President Tabit. President Tabit, would it be possible here? Yeah, from the sky, guys.
Yes, ever. How, how can I help you? Yes, you may, please feel free.
Mr. Fritner, where, where to start? Oh, my goodness. I had the great honor of meeting Mr. Fritner during the pandemic because life is life and life throws curveballs at us. Mr. Fritner at the time was board president and someone who I've, as someone who was starting to get involved in their local community, it was such an honor to be able to meet. Hi, buddy. I have a, I have a five-year-old brother. I get it. You should, you should hear the things he says. I love it. But I just want to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you for always communicating here with us with the student boards. It's been super fun being able to sit next to you and be able to chit chat between a little segments and just be able to goof around. It's been truly an honor. I think the thing I'm most sad about is that I won't have the iconic Steve squared duo at my graduation. But thank you for all you've done. I can't wait to see what, what more you do because definitely we won't be leaving you alone for anytime soon. But thank you for all you've done for the district, for our students. Truly appreciate it from the bottom of all our hearts, and thank you again.
Thank you, ever. Moving forward, your turn now.
Okay. Jeez, you know, after all this, I don't know how you guys are going to go on without me, frankly. I, you know, after hearing all this tonight. I, I made some notes because I thought I'll never remember to say everything, and then I need to make more because I, I honestly, and I, when we walked in, I told Steve, I didn't think anyone was going to be here. I didn't think, you know, I didn't think it was that big a deal. So first off, to, to those who did come tonight, thank you for all the kind words. I can't express in words how much I appreciate it. Senator Portman, you know, we, we have gotten to be very good friends, and I, and it's a friendship I cherish. I believe you were the first elected official who endorsed me when I was running. And, and I greatly appreciate, appreciate that. And you, you had gave, gave me advice on how to, how to run. So I, I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all you do and everything you have done in service to the, to the Senate district, but also for our schools. And we've seen you consistently, both in our district and Five Star, just really making a difference for us. So I appreciate that. Assemblymember Friedman, thank you. I got to know her more as I was going through the election process, and we've also become good friends. And again, another great advocate for, for Burbank and for the Burbank schools. My PTA friends, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for PTA. I've said that before, and it's the truth. It taught me a lot about how to work within an organization, how to advocate, how to advocate for our students, how much, how important that really is. And as Annette mentioned, some great and lifelong friendships. And I, I have to recognize, and that feels, she was the only official other person on my campaign when I ran. She was my campaign treasure. I had no manager, and I had other volunteers, which were mostly family members. And that was the only person, other person who was an actual member of my campaign. So thank you. And thank you, Carol and Amy, for being here as well. That's I, I, I can't. God, I'm going to really struggle forwards. Thank you all so much. Rosemary, I thank you for the, the words, I, I, kind words. I, I appreciate you and all the parents like you who have come out regularly to advocate. It's never, it's part of being a board member. You know, you, we need to be here and, and hear what people have to say. So even if it's something that is very critical of us, that's, you know, we have to hear it, and you have never held back on that. And I, I do appreciate it. And we miss you at the district. So I'm glad you're, you're still coming to meetings. We still see you. And, and James, I, I hope to still see you more in the future. I think you have so much to give the community. Constantine, I'm sorry, I'm skipping around because I didn't have pandemic to write down notes. Thank you. And Councilman Schultz is here as well. We were running at the same time that you, as you mentioned, that's where we first got to know each other, as you do on the campaign trails. Sometimes you're at the same events and, you know, the forums and things that get held at the same time. As with many friendships, you know, we go through trying times, but we find a way through. And I'm, I'm certain we will continue to. And I thank you for your service to the city and your continued service to the city. And both you, also, thank you. I know you didn't want to speak, but thank you for coming. I, I greatly appreciate it. I hope I didn't miss any other speakers. I'm really sorry. I'm, I normally used to have a pad here and a pen. And I thought, oh, I don't have to bring anything with me tonight. Except my phone, I can read all my notes on my phone. And I'll try and keep it short because I know there's, it's a loaded agenda in December, and there's a lot of actual work to do for the district. So I will try and not go on too long. First off, I want to congratulate Abby Kamgar on the election to the board. I think you ran an impressive campaign. I think you made your positions on issues facing the district very clear. I've mentioned that to you once at an event. I wish you nothing but the best as you begin your term on the board. As, as Ben mentioned, it's not an easy thing. But you know what? We need people to step up and run, and I think it's fantastic you did. I, I think, you know, this was a good campaign season. I think it was a very, as cordial as elections can be. I think all the candidates respected each other and really worked to show that to the community. So congratulations and good luck. There are so many people to thank, and I, I, I'm sure I'm going to miss some as I go through. Excuse me. First of all, thank you to the voters of Burbank for electing me, giving me a chance to serve the district. It's not something I ever dreamed I would do, to be honest. I, I never expected to do that. I, I never, until six months before I ran, I, I probably still was not thinking about it. Or if I was, you know, this much. So thank you for electing me and giving me the chance. Our teachers and our school staff are the backbone of our district. I, I don't get to see that. I haven't gotten to see them nearly enough. We try and get to schools, some of us, because these are not full-time jobs. We all have daytime jobs that we have to deal with. I never got to classrooms nearly as much as I expected to and hoped to. And I hope that can change for, you know, the board in the future. But being in the classrooms with the teachers is, is, has always been a pleasure to me because you see how, for one thing, how good they are at their job and, and, you know, and how, how, how hard it is to do. And just, you know, where we, where we, where we would be if we didn't have that kind of work. So Ms. Sebastian, as a representative, obviously, of the teachers, and thank you to everyone for the, for the work that we, as has been mentioned, we've gone through probably the most challenging last three years ever in education. And that was for everyone. And we couldn't get through it without our teachers and also the classified staff that are also working at the, on the campuses every day. The district off of personnel, sorry. There's a lot that, of work that has to be done to run a district. And we couldn't operate the schools and have them for the teachers without the contributions constantly of facilities, human resources, student services, technology, food services, finance, payroll. I'm, I'm missing more. But there's so many people who, who support making the district operate. And thank you all for the jobs you do. Ms. Clark, congratulations again for your election. The city's gain is the district's loss. Thank you for everything you've done, certainly my time on the board and beyond, for the support that you provide, both the superintendent and the board members. I'll be looking forward to the work you're going to be performing for the citizens of Burbank. The administration, the cabinet, we've got fantastic assistant superintendents in this district, Ms. Cusco, Dr. Pramo, Dr. Niemann, Mr. Cantwell, who hasn't been here as long, but we had before him in that position, Ms. Cuckta and Mr. Janes. I don't think I could have had a better group of people working for this district and not just, and going beyond the directors, Dr. Knappick, Ms. Cashman, Mr. Vonk, Ms. Lowe, Dr. Anders. And again, I'm missing people. I'm, I'm pulling, I wrote down some, and I'm pulling more off the top of my head. These are people that, we've actually, in my time on board, had to cut back on administration, and that made all of your jobs more loaded, and you still performed them so admirably. And, and I, I, I can't tell you, you know, how much I appreciate it and how much all of us really do. Dr. Hill, already, when I was elected, you had had a couple of challenging years at the start of your tenure on the board. We spent about the first half of my tenure in financial struggles, including, obviously, the two parcel tax measures that we all worked on very hard, unsuccessfully, unfortunately. And then had COVID dropped on us. I can only speak for myself. I thank you for your support, for your dignity, for your honesty, your unselfishness and your efforts to make this district the best it can be. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with you. And lastly, my, the board members. I was lucky enough, I've been on the board, sorry. Assemblymember Freeman, only five and a half years. It may have seemed like ten years sometimes, but been on for five and a half years. And I was lucky in that time. A lot of people have to work with many different board members over time. I only had to work with five different people. And I think that's to my benefit. The first, obviously, was Dr. Reynolds, Dr. Robert Reynolds, a mentor for me in both PTA and BUSD. My colleague still in P flag Burbank. I think it's more apparent than ever that the leadership and the calming influence that she brought to this governing body and, and well, we're, we're still great, but we, we do miss that at times. Dr. Weisberg, as you mentioned, we only got to work together for about two years. I wish it was longer. I, I really do. I, when you first contacted me, talking about you were on, I was happy to sit down and, and discuss the, you know, what went into it because I thought you were a person who, you know, definitely had the makings of a good board member. And I'm, I'm happy you ran. I'm, I'm, I'm happy you won, that you're serving. Thank you for the fresh voice you brought to the board, which that's one of the good things of changing board member. Even if things are going well, it's good to have fresh voices sometimes. Thank you for being an active voice for all the stakeholders. You never hold back advocating for anyone and everyone and for staying true to your ideals. That's so important for the district and, and it represents who you are and, and who you, why you were elected. Dr. Aga Khanian couldn't be here. We didn't know each other very well before you joined the board. I can safely say we've become very good friends. Thank you for being a sounding board for me and being, and allowing me to be one for you, certainly at least within the confines of the Brown Act. I'm sorry you're not able to be here, but I cherish your friendship. I'm sure we'll see each other soon, my brother. Ms. Tabit, first, congratulations on your reelection. As I've told you, I, I think the voters of Burbank value your leadership and the institutional knowledge of BUSD and of Burbank that you bring to the position. I think that the election showed that. I, and I think they value it a little bit less than I do, but that's how much I value it. I look forward to your continued service and to our continued friendship. And, and yes, and my wife probably even more so. As you, you've probably become better friends even than you and I have. Mr. Ferguson, the last year has been challenging, there's no doubt. But I also like to remember that you and I agreed on the vast majority of issues over the years that I've served on the board. And we've, we've worked together many times for the betterment of the district successfully, I feel. I, I also remember that it was you about seven years ago, on a Thanksgiving morning in the kitchen of my house, who was the first person to suggest to me that I should run for a seat on the Board of Education. I had never even thought about it, even time on the, on the PTA board. And that first planted the seed, even though I, at the time, I thought, I'll never do that, you know, there's no way you gotta be. But that's the, that was the first, you know, planted the seed. So I guess the lesson is be careful what you wish for sometimes. But I, I wish you well. I, 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 I wish you so much the better going forward. Serving in a public office is not easy. Just running for office is a challenge. Just running for office is a challenge. Cam Carr, Mr. Morrison, Ms. Tabit, to have it fresh in their memories. It's a challenge just to get to that point of saying, "I think I'm the right person to do this right now." To have the confidence in yourself and the belief that other people might have that much confidence in you. And then you have to go out and campaign and convince people of it. And that's just getting there. People run for office for lots of different reasons. I won't go into why. Well, I ran because I believed in our district. I believed I could make a difference. I guess time will tell whether I did or not. But I ran because this is the job I wanted to do also. I cared about our schools. I still care about our schools greatly. And I know some people will run for public office looking as a stepping stone and moving up forward. I can say with complete confidence, in my years on the board, every person who's served on this board has been dedicated 100% to our district. There was, there, there is no, okay, next I'll run for this. And next I'm gonna, you know, this is, I've got my course planned out. We don't always agree. And frankly, honestly, that's probably a good thing. People have said over the years, oh, you're just rubber stamp, you know, for a few years on the board, they said, oh, you just, everything's 5-0. You guys never disagree. We disagreed all the time. You work through sometimes. And if you know that this is the direction of the board, then yes, sometimes the votes turn out that way, and sometimes they don't. But no matter how much we've disagreed, I know, I can say with complete confidence, everyone who I've served with was 100% focused on making Burbank Unified the best it can be. We've always been that way, and I think we're always going to be that way. As Assemblymember Freeman pointed out, no one does this because of ego. No one does this to get rich. This, this is a part-time position, you know, frankly. It's not, it's a full-time position that's treated like a part-time position. But we don't do it for fame, and we don't do it to, you know, get our picture in the paper. Usually, we're trying to avoid that, because it usually means something bad. Often means something bad. We do it because we care. And we want the best for our students. And it's a challenge. A challenge trying to provide that all the time. And we're not always successful. And people will disagree with us sometimes about our route trying to make that successful. And that's okay. That's part of the public process. That's part of the governing process. But no one will ever be able to say, "We don't care, and we're not trying to do the best we can for our students and for this school district." It has been my absolute honor to serve this school district, to serve with these people. It will always be close to my heart, and I will always continue to support it. And with that, in the words of Edward Armuro, "Good night and good luck."
Momentarily, we'll be moving on to administration of the oath of office for incoming Board of Education members. Abby, let's meet at the front. We'll wait for Kimberly. She'll be just a second.
I don't think we need a mic, right?
Yes.
Can everybody hear?
We need a mic for people at home. And especially for folks with audio.
I'm going to read it, and you are gonna raise your hand.
One at a time, or do you want to?
Same time. And when I say "I," you're gonna say your name.
My own name.
You say your own name. Keep these people straight in. All right, we're ready. Do we have a battery? We had a battery? Yes, we do. Okay, we're here to administer the oath of office.
Do you want us to use this way?
You just are gonna say, "I do." I will, I shall. You're gonna, you're gonna, you're just gonna, I'm gonna read the whole thing, and at the end, you're gonna say, "I shall." You just say your name. So you can take a mic for your name? You can tell we've done this a million times.
I think so.
So please raise, raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I..."
"I," Charlene Tabit.
"Abby Ponser-Comcar."
"...do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic; that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California; that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion; and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter."
"I will."
"I will."
Thank you. Congratulations.
And you probably have a problem. I'm single.
And, this is yours to take home. You just sign, right?
Right here, it says signature.
You did so well.
I knew I had it.
Goodness, for smart eyes.
Amen.
You're gonna go home and go to sleep, babe. They're so cute.
What are you gonna do?
I'm gonna stay here all night long. Bye.
Okay, and you got your souvenirs?
Yeah, you need to sign this.
Oh, I did. Oh, sorry.
That's where I signed it.
My bad.
Okay, I can sign it.
Takes the first signature on this. First timer.
Good job, Abby.
Bye, buddy. It's hard to be creative.
Oh, no, I signed it and took it away.
Right there?
Well, thank you.
Very.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hello. Wild. More comfortable than having a child crawling all over me, though, I tell you. I was like, you need to relax.
Okay, remarks from outgoing Board of Education president, which is me. It is absolutely an honor and a privilege to serve on the Burbank Board of Education. It is also an honor and a privilege to be able to serve with this governing board. My colleagues over the last year are, have been very motivated and encouraging to continue to work for the best for our students in this district. And I'm appreciative of that. As well as the staff that we work with also has, as I do, has always been my, my biggest thing is that we do what's best for kids, as much as we can in this district. Which means we take care of the adults that work for us. We take care of families and parents. But that has really been the focus the last year, I feel, with myself in this board. And I'm really appreciative of all the work that they have done to make that happen. Abby, welcome. Thank you. Mr. Fritner stated, and, and Mr. Ferguson too, in your thanks to Mr. Fritner, talked about how the bonds on this board have grown and grow you. And kind of, Dr. Agarconian always talks about, "We're a family, I love you." And there are times, yes, absolutely. And, and it's odd, it's almost like a family where we really all have the goal of getting to the same place. It's just, we're not always on the same pathway to get to that same place. But for most, for the most part, the respect that we use to work together to get there has to be at the top of that. Or we'll never get to that spot that we hope to go to. It's important to work as, as a board, as a like-minded. We may not all think alike all the time, but it's important that we continue to move forward in the best interest of those we serve. And I start with the kiddos. It has been a very difficult year. We've been through a lot. I joke sometimes that I have bored PTSD because of the stress of, of being in this position, the one that you're supposed to hold it all together somehow. And when you're passionate and you care, sometimes that's a difficult thing to do. But I've, I've tried as fastidiously as I absolutely could in my role, and I hope I've accomplished it. And if I've offended or upset anyone along that way, that was not my intention, and I certainly apologize for that. This has probably been, on this board, one of, besides maybe being a mother, one of the biggest honors of my life. And to not only be now re-elected for a third term, but get to continue to serve with an amazing board is truly an honor. So I thank you for your support and kindness, including to the community. I'm not one for a big conversation. You know that I basically love my community. I love my school district. I want to do what's best for those kids, and I will spend the next four years doing that. Even though, probably will not be in the next four years in the role of president, but one never knows, right? So, thank you again. Thank you for all your support and kindness. For your help, for your opinions, and, and so forth. Sometimes the best things come from when you don't always agree, but you need to find a path to get there. So, thank you, all of you, for your time. And I'm gonna move on quickly, because we've been here for an hour and a half. And you've got four more years of me, so you're not gonna, not ever hear me again. I guarantee it. Yes, you had something to say?
Ms. Tabit, thank you, and thank you for your service as president of the school board. I do want to give our new colleague a chance to say, "Sorry to catch you on the spot, but having just joined the dais, an opportunity as well, potentially with your consent, to say a few words as well."
It was on before. Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. I appreciate that. You did catch me, put me on the spot a little bit here. It wasn't on the agenda. But thank you. And thank you, Shar, for your, it was really nice to get to know you during the campaign. And I'm really looking forward to working with you and working with this board and really making sure that we can work together in a really functional and productive way. I know that can be a challenge sometimes. And, you know, thank you, of course, to Mr. Fritner. It's been, it's been just a pleasure to kind of get to know this group over the past several months. And of course, thank you to the voters of Burbank, without whom I would not be here. So I'm just, I'm really looking forward to this. And especially just diving in and getting to work. As Dr. Hill has learned, I read the whole board packet, and I send lots of questions. So, yes, exactly. So I'm sorry in advance for the next four years of 25 questions per board meeting. But yeah, thank you. And thank you, Shar, for your service.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 9E, election of officers. I'm gonna throw something out to the board, and it's absolutely a board decision, not mine, although I have an opinion and get to share that. I'm thinking and would like to move election of officers 9E to the January meeting, when all five of us would be here, and we could have input from all five. Did you, oh, I thought you were reaching forward. Any thoughts?
I, I think that the thought is a commendable one. I think we should move ahead with the election of officers only because it is such a long time between now and our next board meeting. And I think it's really important for growth, movement, and like a seamless transition for the board, that that process begins tonight. So while I understand that Mr., or excuse me, Dr. Agarconian isn't present, we do have quorum, so it feels to me important that we take this step in order to continue moving forward on the many, many things we have in the works.
And I personally, there's not much for the board as we go into the holiday time, moving forward, till we do get to January, so I don't... Anyway, that is my opinion that I think we should move it, so I don't need to say anything more. Any other thoughts?
I'm, I'm just curious, do we, if Dr. Agarconian is not here, is he able to take a leadership position?
Well, he wouldn't be able to accept it if he were here.
Right, but we could still not, we could still elect him to, okay.
Yes.
Got it.
I just think a five-person vote is a...
I would rather move it to January, so that we have Dr. Agarconian here, but I can be persuaded.
I, I would, I would just say in response to what President Tabit said, I actually think there's an enormous amount of...
I actually think there's an enormous amount of work that can happen between now and January. Obviously not things on which we can vote, but there's so much to be done, there's so much to think about as we move into the post-holiday, you know, the second semester. And so for me, it does feel like it's some time lost. I mean, you're right, we don't have meetings, so we're not, and we're not voting on things, that's absolutely true, but I think there's an enormous amount of work that can be done by board members during a time where for some of us, I mean selfishly like me, where I'm, I'm on break for a couple of weeks, right? So, I understand, I do understand where you're coming from, but for me, it feels like a missed opportunity, and one I would very much like to move forward on tonight if, if possible.
Okay. Did you have something you wanted to share too?
You know, I, I think that there is, you know, a number of, of different things that require planning for members of the board who are serving in leadership, particularly setting up times to sit down, communicate, and to, yes, be able to coordinate that with staff. Dr. Agarconian, if he was nominated to serve in a leadership role, would not be serving as likely as Board President or Vice President due to the rotation that we typically observe. And so, you know, isn't responsible for agenda review and a number of other factors. And this would be, you know, extending a presidential term, frankly, another month, which is unprecedented compared to most. So, I, I think we should stick with the tradition. Unfortunately, Dr. Agarconian couldn't join us tonight. If he was able to join via a video, I think he would have. But I, I think we should move forward.
Which, which we did look into, wasn't possible. Right, and not saying that was gonna happen on the board agenda previously. Just for the public awareness. Well... I don't know, because we're kind of at a... I am, aren't I, but I still, I shouldn't respond to you, but already not like that, but...
I, I assume that if we don't, if we, if we tie on the motion that we then move forward with the agenda as planned. So, it just sounds like we should.
Okay.
Move forward with the agenda as planned.
Okay, all right, so do I then have a nomination for President?
President Tabit. I nominate Vice President Ferguson to be President.
Do I have a second? Okay. We have a motion for Mr. Ferguson for President and a second by Mr. Ferguson for, for his nomination to President. All those in, any comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a two-two, I'd also vote nay, so we have a two-two vote.
Well...
So, we could take, we could wait, we could take another nomination. We could... Any suggestions from the board?
No.
All right, do I have another nomination then for President?
I, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Happy, I, I guess move to table at this point, if we're, we're tied.
Okay, we can do that, we will table it until January. Okay, thank you. We'll just, so we'll skip 9F. We will move to present, nope, we did that, reports from the board, starting with our student representatives. We have, is Catherine here this evening? No, thank you. We have Serena Terpetrosian from Burbank High School.
Okay. I just say a quick little thing, congratulat, congrat, oh, okay. Congratulations to everyone, sorry, I've been sitting there for a while. And as a student who's only been here for, obviously not even a full term yet, seeing my siblings lead, I've seen the leadership that it takes, especially being a student leader myself, and I could just imagine how much more difficult it gets when you're dealing with a lot more people, a lot more opinions, and a lot of different age groups, and I really respect that. And I'm so honored to take the guidance from all of you guys, so thank you for that. Okay, so, good evening, Board President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and the wonderful Burbank community. So, on December 2nd, our BHS Instrumental Music Association hosted their concert, Sounds of the Season, which was their winter-themed concert. Last Thursday, December 8th, our Burbank High Dance Program posted, hosted their annual AMC Night in the middle of downtown Burbank, where our unleashed dance team and our advanced dance team go between AMC 16 and Boiling Crab and host performances for the public, so that people walking by just get a nice performance of what Burbank High dancers can do, and I heard it was really fun. Also, our winter sports are in full session, and they're working extremely hard in these unideal temperatures. And last week, Burbank High got to host its first wrestling match since, since we're fortunate enough to now have our own wrestling team. And it was amazing to experience such a unique sport in the comfort of our own gym, not to mention that our Bulldogs secured the victory against Webb High School, so I was really proud. Also, last Friday in the quad, our Armenia Club hosted a dance party, where they started off by dancing Shushpar, and then taught others how to enjoy, enjoy the traditional dances and how to learn them, and it was really fun, and it's, it's been an honor to be able to incorporate a lot more different cultures and dances, and I look forward to keep doing that. Also, Saturday, December 3rd, the senior class hosted a movie night, where for $10, you got to come to the Burbank High Field and watch Home Alone. Everybody was encouraged to bring their blankets and chairs and whatever, and it was a really fun experience, and I think it brought the Burbank High community a lot closer, and it was really fun to experience that. And there was also tons of food that you could buy, tacos and stuff, so it was truly amazing. Also, in terms of ASB, this week, our ASB hosted a winter-themed spirit week to end off the semester. Monday was holiday pajamas, Tuesday was World Cup Day, so students were encouraged to wear their favorite team's jerseys. Wednesday was snow gear day, where students had the opportunity to show off their best cold-temperature outfits. Today was ugly sweater day, and tomorrow, to end off the week, students are encouraged to wear their best holiday accessories. Along with our spirit days every day of the week, ASB also hosted a lunch activity in the middle of the quad that coincided with our spirit days to help raise a little bit more spirit and make it really fun for our students. Also, going all the way back before Thanksgiving, ASB did collaborate with our Rotary Interact Club at Burbank High to donate to the Burbank Coordinating Council Holiday Drive, and we donated non-perishables, and we were, I'm honored to say that we filled a whole SUV of non-perishables and got to donate that right away. Other than that, our Bulldogs are just gearing up for finals week, and all I can say is that it's still amazing to be a Bulldog. Any questions?
No, anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Everwerta from JBHS. I have to say, I like the name on the sleeve.
And graduation year.
I like that, pretty cool.
Good evening, President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, board members, Superintendent Hill, amazing district staff, and wonderful Burbank community here and watching at home. I'm excited to share with you all the amazing things going on at Burrows. Firstly, I actually went home and changed, but I was supposed to be in PJs, because my mom did not allow me. But if, if I were in my PJs, that would be because I just came from Burrows, where we just had our power, our Powder Puff game for the first time in a couple of years. ASB as well is currently having our Holiday Spirit Week, which is as well is winter-themed. Monday was holiday headwear, wear your best holiday hairware, headwear. I rocked my Santa hat with Mickey ears. Tuesday was tacky sweater, I won best tacky sweater, why? Because mine light up. Wednesday was colors, freshman, oh, it was class colors, freshmen wore yellow, sophomores green, juniors red, and seniors blue. Today is snowed in, so wear your PJs and fuzzy socks. And tomorrow is candy cane lane, so make sure to wear your best red and white gear. This Friday as well, ASB is hosting our staff and faculty luncheon to show the appreciation and give thanks to all the hard work of our staff and faculty they have given the semester. As well, last week, our amazing VMA and IMA Dance Production had their Holiday Spectacular Show, which was an amazing hit and successful night for everyone who took part. Huge shout-out to Tech Crew as well for spending countless hours making sure the show was flawless. There was a hiccup, though, on the Saturday night. So during the show, during intermission, a rat went through the, through the scoreboard, the score, I guess, the wires, and bit through a wire, and delayed the show 30 minutes. And, don't worry, the rat was fried, because he chewed through the wire. So, rest in peace, the rat. But the show after that continued and went flawless. ASB as well had the great honor of collaborating with the Burbank Coordinating Council and hosting our annual food drive, where we got so many donations from all of our student body at Burrows. With all the donations collected, going to help make holiday baskets for families. As well, ASB was excited and happy to see that we also filled up non-perishables with an entire SUV. As well, ASB was so happy to have, this year, to adopt a family, where we had an amazing experience and opportunity to give back to our amazing community that's given us so much. The family enjoyed all their gifts that we got them, they enjoyed, it was just so nice seeing the reaction and just being able to give back, especially just seeing the smiles just made it so much worth it, and we can't wait to continue to participate in this amazing program. ASB as well is getting ready for another collaboration with UCLA for another blood drive. ASB as well is getting geared up and getting sign-ups for our student body. In the world of sports, a huge congratulations to our soccer team and basketball for starting off their season. Basketball, especially to basketball, who have won their last two games against Glendale and Hoover High. Our loon crew as well for all their work this semester, especially with their last event helping our freshmen with tutoring for finals, cocoa and cram, where they were able to go get hot chocolate, and as well some help on some tutoring. I did steal a cup of hot chocolate, but I did tutor, so it's okay. As well, a huge shout-out to our college peer mentors for all this work, helping seniors through college applications. We wish our bears a good luck on their finals, and as well to our seniors, a huge congrats for getting their applications done. That is it for my report, but moving on to student concerns, remember the rat. Can we do something about a rat problem in our auditorium? I've had many choir and VMA students, IMA students come and be like, "There's a rat." I'm like, "Oh, that's cute." So if we could, please, see what we can do as BUSD to maybe control our rat problem. That would be appreciated, and I appreciate, and I think especially choir would appreciate not seeing rats crawling around in the dark when they're trying to get dressed. But as well, moving on to another student concern, which is a more serious topic. Recently, at Burrows, there has been a case of sexual assault that has been reported and went publicly. I would just like for this to come to the attention of the board, especially as this has been an issue in the past. Seeing the, at the next meeting, whoever takes leadership, to have this as a main priority, be able to participate with students, how we, how we can get students active in this situation, educate, what, what are the possibilities that we can do? Just because we, we know many students have faced this problem, or who have, many who haven't been able to speak out of this issue. So if, that would be something that we could take a look into, see how we can support our students survivors of sexual assault, and how we can educate and really bring a presentation and awareness to our student body. That's all for my report, if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, thank you. Now we have requests to address the board. I have three cards tonight, my first speaker is Gerard, and I'm really having trouble with the last name. Do we have a Gerard here this evening? Last name maybe starts with a G, or met's a middle initial? Oh! Geneva. I thought that was an R. My apologies.
Hi, I'm Geneva Gisella, I'm a senior at John Burrows, and I'm here, thank you. I'm here in support of the divine feminine at John Burrows High School, and I was wondering if it was okay if I asked you questions?
You just ask.
Okay, okay, sorry.
You just ask, and board members and their responses, if they so choose, will address it.
Okay, how much time do I have to speak? Okay, also, there are staff and students, should I avoid names, like how do I kind of go about talking about it?
Go ahead.
Feel free to say what you need to say. You have five minutes, and then we respond at the end. So, we may not respond back and forth, but we'll respond at the end.
Thank you. Okay, talking about whatever talked about, there is a student at our school named Sam Kroll, and he has sexually abused and assaulted and raped multiple people. And even after being made aware of these reports to the school, they haven't done really anything. And it's just, as someone who's been through some scary things like that, it is extremely traumatizing, it's hard to deal with, it's scary, it's invasive. And unlike these people, luckily, I'm blessed enough to not be in a position where I constantly have to see this person. But also having friends who have been assaulted by Sam, I hear just them, how they talk about it, how they have to relive, you know, what he's done, and how they have to go about just seeing him every day. And I think that's really wrong. And on top of that, there are a couple of mandated reporters who have been reported to, but have not done, you know, what you're supposed to do as a mandated reporter. They've ignored Title IX, and example of this is Lee Carlton, and after multiple people making reports, she forgot these were made, or the, I guess, claims were made. And when trying to just get some action and see like, hey, what's being done about this situation that is still happening to multiple people, they don't really, they don't really do anything or say anything. So I would really like to see something about that be done. It's really not fair to the people who have experienced this and been traumatized by this, but also for people, he could be potentially doing that too. I think it is extremely dangerous and harmful and just scary to be in environment, or in an environment, sorry, with someone like that, and I just don't think that that's fair, especially because that is a predominant issue in the world. And a part of it that also kind of bugs me is the John Burrows student body is a huge part of a lot of things. And the staff also, they claim to be the voice for the student body, they want to be here and uplift, but what do you do when that voice is not advocating for you? They, you know, they say things like, "Come talk to us about whatever," that could be bullying, racism, homophobia, or something as serious as this. And a little, not a lot of action has been done in my years of going to Burrows and personal experiences. And I just, I really do think that a lot of action needs to be taken, a lot of change needs to be made for not only just the people who've been through it, but just the safety of others, and just, it's, it's a huge issue in the world. And it just, it's, it's concerning, and just for lack of better wording, really unsettling, when even these trusted adults that are supposed to be here help you with something, especially with this, something as serious as this. It's really unsettling to see this person, I see him every day in the hallway, and it's scary to think that it feels like these adults, adults are okay with it. And a question I just wish I could pose to them, or just anybody, is, I want, not, it's a horrible thing to think about, but how would they react if this was people happening in their life? You shouldn't have to know somebody like that to care about something this serious. Yeah, that's all I want to say. Okay.
Thank you, sweetie. Our next speaker is Dori Foster, followed by Aram Arakalian.
Good evening. Good evening, President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, it's to Superintendent Hill and our board members. I am also here on this difficult subject, I try not to get emotional about it. I come here as a concerned parent who's been alarmed by the information that you've heard here tonight. I learned it last week through the protest and meeting some of these girls at Burrows. recently and also through then reading further information in the article that was written in the Burbank Leader. Um, let me be clear, I'm not here to inquire about the alleged sexual assault, but rather to understand why a student was ignored by your staff when they came forward expressing how and why they haven't felt safe. Um, according to Title IX, as you just heard, and I would hope everyone's aware of it, this inquiry by the students should have been reported and it wasn't, and it wasn't done in the proper way or a timely manner. Our students don't feel safe. I was also told that Matt Chambers, um, opened this year, uh, with a video promising all the students a safe place for them. And that is not happening. He's not listening to our students. It concerns me so much. I've since also spoke to other concerned students. One of them is Max Purdy. He couldn't be here tonight. He's an awesome student, but he's studying for his finals. Um, his mom is here, uh, representing. Um, he told me about another situation with a recently, with a substitute teacher. Um, recently, uh, there was, when he was, uh, he was made aware and he has seen a video of a substitute teacher that during virtual lessons exposed himself to in the video. This video was brought to administrators and they were told to delete the video because this could ruin this man's career. Max has seen this video. He recently went into a classroom about two weeks ago and this substitute teacher was in the class teaching. We hired him again. So Max very quickly got out and went down to Mr. Chambers' office. He was not available. He spoke to an administrator who was very shocked and promised to relay his name to Principal Chamber, uh, Principal Chambers. And as of two weeks since he reported this, Max has heard nothing. And I'm starting to see a pattern here and I'm, I'm very, very upset and concerned and frustrated. We're better than this in Burbank. Um, it always feels that things are being swept under the rug, that things aren't being talked about because it's safer or you're afraid of what people are going to think versus being vocal to the community to make everyone feel safe and know that you're addressing these problems that are a lot of times out of our control, but you can address them and make everybody feel safe. Burbank used to be a place that people moved to because of the schools. And now I know more families that are looking at private schools for their children to leave because they have no intention of sending them to our high schools. They're willing to take loans out and go into debt to leave our school district because of these things that are happening. And I, and I'm one of them. And it's, it's, it's really heart wrenching. And then to hear what we've heard tonight, thank you ever for being brave and all of you for being brave and getting up here and speaking, speaking out and wanting to be heard and just wanting the support. And I beg you to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram Arakalian, followed by Joel Schlossmann.
Hello, board members. Hello, everybody. Um, so I'd like to kind of continue since my monthly speeches that I've been giving here. Um, and today I want to kind of real briefly just touch on also the, uh, the survey that was recently done about where the funding should go. I believe you have some money for funding. And, um, it's funny, I looked at that survey and the number one, uh, response from what is majority of parents responding was they wanted mental health for their kids. They wanted you guys to spend more money so that they were better mentally, uh, in, in the schools because they noticed it, that there is a problem. Uh, kids aren't, I guess they're not thinking right. And that, and that comes from not just, uh, you know, maybe what's happening in the home or what's happening in the school, but also what's happening in society at large. And this comes from confusion that they may feel about, you know, what they're being told and information that is being relayed to them. And, um, so, uh, you know, I think that's a great idea to spend more on mental health, but I would advise you to go in more of a supportive services, you know, like to support their mental health, give them things to look up to, live up to faith, love, these type of things, not drugs, definitely not prescriptions. Uh, because, you know, the prescription drug that they're giving to kids now to affirm their gender is the same prescription drug we give to sexual offenders to castrate them. So I don't think drugs is the right way to go on that one, but just more, uh, I guess, support and love to the kids, you know, uh, like a support centers and things like that, counselors, uh, things like that, not psychiatrists. And then also, uh, last time I spoke, uh, you know, I usually just speak, I don't really ask any questions. And, uh, Mr. Hill mentioned, because I didn't ask any questions, he wasn't going to respond. So I do have some questions today and kind of lines up with what others have talked about today. And, uh, so my question is, do you not take action against students? I'm sorry, against teachers who speak to students about sexual behavior to that they can just say whatever they want and you guys do nothing about it? Are they allowed to just speak about how they are sexually? You know, what their sexual preferences are? Are these things allowed in this school? That's my question. Um, and so, and then another question that I, uh, that I had is, do you, does the school in any way actively teach students, uh, about, uh, sexual preferences and activities? Uh, that's another question, uh, without parents' permission, of course. Uh, with parents' permission, I think the parents should be the one talking about these things, but, uh, so that's what I want to know is, do you guys teach anything besides basic biology? Do you teach any sexual material to the students? And also do you punish teachers that expose themselves on video chats and, uh, you know, talk to them about their gender preferences, which I believe is probably illegal? And lastly, I'd like to just end off with, uh, reminding everybody about the season. This is the season for remembering Christ. This is not Santa's season. This is not about gifts. It's not about what you wear. It's about Christ. That's this season and that's where I believe a lot of, mm, mental health can be gained is to focus on God, God's love for us, you know, to keep our minds focused on Him and we will be healthier physically, mentally, spiritually. We cannot ignore the spiritual aspects. Sure, I understand, you know, the school may not want to teach these things, but you can always refer to other organizations within the city and the community that can help on these aspects. And this will help the mental health of the kids greatly. And, um, and yeah, so just, uh, keep, please consider what I have said. I know a lot of you don't agree with me, but that's fine. I don't mind. I don't mind being an army of one because I got God with me and, you know, everything's possible with Him. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Joel Schlossmann. And that is my final card. One virtual.
This is a big deal, goddammit. Did you know about this, Mr. Superintendent? What have you been doing about it? Have you called 911? This is serious stuff. The most serious stuff I've ever heard in this chamber. Oh, we need a complete report of what's going on at that school. It's disconcerting, more than disconcerting. This is against everything we stand for. I expect strong leadership. I had visions right now of Joe Hooven. Anybody remember Joe Hooven? He sat up there and, and this type of thing was reported to him and he buried it and he resigned. Why don't we have a name tag for our newest member? You knew she was coming. Is this how we treat our, our new, newly elected officials? Shame on you. Do you know what this means? You know what that means? Shame on you. It's an insult. I was all happy. I want to tell you welcome. I'm glad to see you. I voted for you, but I voted for her too, so, uh, there's a lot to be done. Our kids need you. We're, we're passing, we're graduating kids that don't meet the state standards. You're going to hear about distinguished schools and, ooh, we got this award. And then you look at what it means. You break it down and our kids can't meet the state standards. I want to hear from you tonight. What are your goals? I never went to your website, but I want to hear what your goals are and how you're going to help our kids because there's more than, uh, diversity and, uh, critical race theory. There's more going on. We need to educate our kids about the basics and these guys have been failing. And right now you're an equal member, twenty percent. You don't need to sit quietly for, uh, you know, a period of time. I want to hear you strong. I want to hear your leadership because we need it. We're desperate for you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for stepping up. I'm sorry you had to deal with this kind of stuff on your first meeting. This is horrific. It really is. Did you, I mean, look, see this thing? I got it in the mail, I guess. It says free and low cost classes for career and training for adults. I love the adult school. In, you know, thirty and forty years ago, I wrote down the classes I took. I went to Spanish, American Sign Language. I took pilot ground school, even though I was already a pilot. And I took mommy and me classes and I was the first one and they had to change the name of mommy and me because of me. They would, they didn't want to register a, a dad. She says, what are you doing here? You know? Yeah, it's a true story. And I, I, you know, I took all the kids there, so, um, in here you got a class that's twenty five hundred dollars. That's far from free and low cost. And I want to know if we can help, you know, at the schools, the kids gotta go. Here at the adult school, parent, uh, people, adults want to go. And I want to know if we can set up a finance program to help people who can't afford it. And I read an article in the LA Times about a furniture, a guy who sold furniture in downtown Los Angeles and his customer base was immigrants and people here illegally even. And he extended credit to them and they paid. They were honorable people and that's what I believe. People are honorable. So I think we should take a chance and, and take payments for kid, for adults who want to take these classes that cost so much money. You know, if, if, if you put together a program of money to loan to them, I'll contribute. I'll be the first one to contribute because I believe they'll pay it back. I believe people want to better themselves. So thank you for your consideration. And let me go back to you, uh, Ms. Posner? Say it again.
Ponser?
Ponser?
Comcar.
Compar?
Comcar.
Ponser, comcar. I'm so glad you're here. You know, I hope, I hope you'll rise for the flag salute. I hope you're a proud American and take that seriously. I heard you take your oath here and I hope you consider what those words mean, allegiance, you know? Happy New Year to everybody. Be, be safe. Drive safe. Be safe. Be healthy.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Agakanian, if you're watching, get well.
Okay. Uh, Steph Comment. Oh, virtual speaker, my apologies.
Just to clarify, because these are all non-agenda items, are you combining public comment? So we do have a virtual.
I just, I guess, yeah, because I just.
So I just want to make sure the audience knows that they don't have to wait till the end too.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Can we wait until the end?
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
So we do have one virtual speaker. So let me tee that up. So we have Ms. Smith. I'm gonna promote you one second. Okay, Ms. Smith, you may unmute and turn your camera on. Thank you.
Hello, actually I'm Brett Smith. This is my wife, Tessa Smith. Uh, we just moved here from New York. Just a little bit of background about ourselves. Uh, we have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. We are new to Burbank. We were excited to move to Burbank and I did want to start off by saying that the Burbank move has been fantastic. The district has been amazing. It's opened up our children in unbelievable ways. And one of the reasons that we moved here was because of the progressive nature of the state, of the area. And when I say progressive, I don't mean politics. I mean that they're progressive in their thought leaders that we're setting standards here in this area that the rest of the world will follow later on. But one of the things that we do find is a bit regressive is the standard that I'm not sure everybody's aware of, but in the middle school and the high schools here in Burbank, children are graded on a run, a timed run, um, that is equivalent to two miles to get an A in twenty-five minutes. Uh, and I just don't believe that grading on this standard is, uh, what we need for our children and for their future. We believe that physical fitness is extremely important. Uh, we did bring it up to our, our school, our principal, and one of the things that we got told was it's in preparation for the California physical fitness, uh, standards, which are fifth, seventh and ninth grades. Uh, however, fifth graders, uh, in elementary school don't do this run, so it does not prepare fifth graders. Uh, one of the other things is we were told that it's a requirement. It is not. It's not a part of the California requirements. Again, they do a two mile run here. Uh, the, the state requirement for the physical fitness test is a one mile run in thirteen minutes or a walk or an aerobic excerpt, or aerobic, it's a test called a Pacer exam. And the whole purpose is to determine the health and fitness of the child. And it specifically says on the state requirements that it should not be used as pass fail criteria. Uh, yeah, it is comprising twenty-five percent of our students' grades. And just a little bit of history on myself, I was in the Navy for six years. I was a national ranked runner. I was ranked second in the nation, so I understand running. And I was also an adult educator. I taught people how to operate and maintain nuclear power plants, nuclear physics, nuclear engineering. So I understand a thing about education. We do not teach here how to run until seventh grade. Um, so a sixth grader that is tested every week to twenty-five percent of their grade is never taught how to run. As an educator, I would never test somebody on a subject I never taught them. And I would never expect them to get better simply by doing it over and over without being told how to do it. Again, as a nationally ranked runner, running is comprised of many different things. There's pace, there's breathing techniques, there's upper body strength. We wouldn't test our kids to how much weight they could lift on a bench or how many baskets they could make in a minute. I don't think that testing them on a run in time is appropriate. I would also say, um, that the standards are, while they are very important, should not be utilized to this. We did, uh, join a group on Facebook that is parents comprised of the Burbank students' uh, parents. And we had over a hundred responses of people and their horror stories about their children and how they do not want to come to school on run days, how they've asked to leave, how they've been ostracized because of the way they run. And then the other thing is, we're told that how they track the children during the run is the children do a lap, they stop, they wait in line to tell their teacher that they've completed a lap, but then they start running again. If the intention of the state exam is for aerobic capacity, it is extremely detrimental to get a heart rate up and then stop, have to give the score, then continue on. Again, we really, really believe in this school district. Um, and we, we just believe that this is a very regressive thing. We've been told it's been around forever. Some of the parents told us that they did it when they were children at the school district here in Burbank and that it traumatized them. Um, so I was just, would like to bring this up to the board. I'm not sure how many people are aware that this is the standard. We've talked to other parents in other school districts that Burbank seems to be unique in this, that California does not require and many other districts do not. I would like to add one thing at the end of my time. As a six-year veteran that fought in two wars, Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom, I fought for the freedom of all Americans and standing for the Pledge of Allegiance has nothing to do with honoring your service members. I fully respect anybody and their decisions to stand or not to stand, and that is true freedom and that is what America is truly about, not the blatant racism that just came from the last individual. the last individual. Thank you, Board. I appreciate your time.
Um, now, we can move on to staff comments.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to all the speakers this evening. Just, uh, for clarification from Mr. R. Kelian, uh, if I wasn't clear last time, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. Uh, I respond to specific questions about agenda items. If it's the general comments for the district, sometimes I'll keep it brief. Always, I'll keep it brief and either direct you to staff or give you a short summary. Uh, so, that, that was my intention in my response last time. But I, I do appreciate all the comments tonight. Um, I'm gonna start with the alleged, uh, alleged incident that happened off-campus with some John Burroughs students. First of all, anybody, any student, any staff member that's experienced sexual assault, rape, sexual trauma, please know that we take that seriously. Please contact Administrator. Um, if you feel like you have not had your voice heard, uh, Dr. John Paramo sitting across from me is our Title IX Coordinator. Uh, we will investigate, we will support you, we wanna make sure you have the resources that you need. I, 100%, um, we've, can say with clarity that the incidents that we know, the individuals that have had concerns, uh, Dr. Paramo has reached out them to directly. Uh, we work with families, we work with the police, we work with mental health professionals, we investigate, we follow our due process. We do have clear board policy, uh, to address these situations. We follow Title IX. If there's any concerns about that, again, you can address them to Dr. Paramo. If you don't feel your concerns being addressed, you can address them to, to me. I know it's very frustrating to not get a detailed response when, uh, allegations arise. I, I am concerned when allegations are spread in public and people don't have firsthand knowledge, uh, because they are sharing information they may not know all the details, and it creates a narrative that may be true, may not be true. And it's challenging for our school district, because we can't respond to each allegation when it's in public. We do it with the individuals involved, and it's in private. And I know that's frustrating. I really, I know it, you want clear answers, but in these situations, we will work with police, mental health, the families, the students involved, to give them the support they need. So, many individuals are starting to, um, share names and what may be facts or not facts. I, I caution all of us to be careful with that. Let's make sure we get the information in the right hands, and we can address that. Uh, that is what we are doing in the district. Um, please, uh, don't make assumptions one way or not. Uh, we will make sure we follow all the way through and get to a resolution to support Mr. R. Kelian, uh, you had a question about what we teach around sexual education. California Department of Education has the Healthy Youth Act. Uh, it's online, but, uh, feel free to reach out to me if you'd like more information on that. Um, all employees in the district are able to come with their full identity. I always introduce myself as he/him/his. Uh, people know I'm a cisgender male, uh, so, as you're representing yourself as individual, uh, people may talk about their sexual orientation, but we do what is appropriate, uh, teaching the standards and just making sure we're true to ourselves. And of course, uh, when we find knowledge about, um, indecent behaviors or someone exposing themselves, we take action. Again, personnel matters, HR matters. It's not something we disclose to the public, so that goes to Ms. Foster as well. Um, we, we get information, and we take action. We don't always follow back up with students or, uh, the community or staff. That's just not, uh, appropriate for us to divulge that, but we take it seriously, and we take action as appropriate. Uh, we get to the facts, and we do take that action. Uh, Mr. Schlossman, I saw Dr. Paramo taking some notes about your idea about, uh, loans. Uh, we have a program, actually, with West Coast Customs. We're working with Sally Mae to set up, uh, financing and loans. Uh, I like your idea of raising money for adult school, so we'll take that. Mr. Noguera and Dr. Paramo will work on that, so I appreciate the suggestion. Uh, Mr. Ms. Smith, welcome to Burbank. I, I appreciate your feedback. Uh, we, this has been a constant conversation in the district of how do we meet the standards around the PE standards and Running Incorporated? You gave some very clear feedback, and I appreciate that. We have a PE task force, and we, we discuss, uh, various topics, and this is something that we can agendize and make sure that we share your feedback and have a conversation with our PE teachers. Do we have the right balance to meet the standards? But I appreciate the specific, the specifics and the examples you gave. Very helpful. Uh, thank you to all the speakers this evening.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I do have one announcement. Uh, we have a new Director of Facilities that I would like to introduce.
I was just gonna remind you.
All right, thank you, Liv. Yeah. So, it is my absolute pleasure to introduce our new Director of Facilities, Mr. Dennis Maxwell. Mr. Maxwell brings various years of experience and contributions in the areas of operations and maintenance to the district. Dennis has served as Supervisor, Operations and Maintenance Superintendent, Director of Operations for the Crescent Valley Water District. Additionally, Dennis has served as a Construction Inspector for the Department of Public Works for Los Angeles County. Most recently, he's been an employee here in the Burbank Unified School District and the Maintenance and Operations Department. Uh, I can say just firsthand, day one, this gentleman hit the ground running. Came in, crackadon, introduced the team, came in with inspiration, motivation, and building that team communication. And then, a couple days later, last weekend, he was working around the clock. So, the rat problem at John Burroughs High School, this man brought the team together to address that. They have a plan to, to move forward that. We know here in Burbank, we do have rat issues at times, so it's a constant battle, but I can guarantee that he's on top of that. Uh, already, Ms. Morrison asked a question about the Disney, um, storage bins. Uh, there's, they've done a site walk already, ready at Disney. There's a plan to move those bins over winter break. And those are just two quick examples in less than a, was it been a week now? It's been a, just a week. One week. Uh, so, we are excited that, long week, but exciting week, and I'm, I'm excited to see what comes, uh, with Mr. Maxwell's leadership. I would love to have him, uh, say a couple words, if he's comfortable with that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, say it.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Madam President, members of the Board, community, parents, everyone. This has been an interesting board meeting. I mean, wow! So many emotions. I just was sitting back there in the corner, and I mean, wow! This is a great board. This is a great community. I look forward to really improving the communication. I have some big feet to fill from Larry Cross. Uh, he's done a great job. I look forward to picking up that baton and just running with it. So, you will see a lot of emails from me at times, uh, whenever it's appropriate, and I look forward to really building up my team, mentoring a lot of people around me, and just bringing us all up. So, we're gonna go to the next level, and I, I, I promise you that. Dedication is, uh, that's, that's huge. So, I'm ready for you. I'm all in.
Okay. Now, my colleagues who, uh, wish to respond? Normally, Abby? We, we...
Is that possible? Is that legit?
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, okay, great. Um, thank you to all the speakers tonight. Uh, I wanna start, um, with Geneva and Dory. Um, thank you for coming forward. Um, I'm, I want you to know that we've heard you, um, specifically about this incident. I'd already talked to the doctor, to Dr. Hill about this earlier this week. Um, think they're working with the Police Department to understand how to move forward, but no one should have to feel unsafe at school. Um, and I want you to hold this board accountable for making sure that you feel safe at school. Um, the other thing I'll add is, you know, I've been a mandated reporter in many jobs, um, and it's distressing to hear that there were reports made that weren't, um, followed up on. Um, and that's something that, you know, we'll, we'll look to find out what happened. Um, and, you know, I, I just, I'm doing that training right now for my board seat, so I'm, I'm doing it again for the, for the second time in like six months, and, um, it's pretty clear what the process is. And so, it's, I, beyond frustrating, um, I think, yeah, distressing is probably the right word. Um, and similarly with, um, the incident with the substitute. You know, that's, it's news to me. It is certainly one of the more upsetting things, um, that I've heard brought up to the dais. And so, I'll be looking forward to working with staff to understand what's happening there, and how do we make sure that processes are followed, um, and that, uh, what am I doing? Kimberly coming for me? Um, that processes are followed and, uh, that doesn't happen, uh, cuz it shouldn't. Um, okay. Now, the next one I've got here, I don't know how you guys keep it straight, frankly. Um, the next one I've got here is, uh, for, uh, Mr. Arak, Arakelian? Did I do that okay? Um, so, thank you for coming. Um, as a member of the public, I've seen you come and do comment before. Um, and I think folks up here have, have, I think, given you the facts around what the state policies are, um, what the state law is. Um, I think what I find, um, worrisome about your comments are conflating kind of teacher gender preferences with, um, a very real concern about the substitute teacher. Um, and, you know, teachers have families. They have people that they love, and they should be allowed to talk about their families and people that they love. Um, and I don't have a problem with that. And I, I think, um, the other piece that you talked about in terms of the root cause of mental health concerns, um, you know, I support psychiatrists, I talked to my own today, uh, they do some great work. Um, and to pretend to know kind of what anyone's diagnosis is, whatever our students need, I, I wanna leave that to the professionals. I certainly trust professionals with my own mental health. Um, Mr. Schlossman, nice to meet you. Uh, thank you for your support. Um, and thank you for your concerns. I am familiar with our academic outcomes, uh, and I can assure you that I am gonna focus on them. Um, as far as my goals, my website is still up, um, because I have not gotten around to taking it down. But mainly, um, what I, what I ran on are, uh, increased engagement with our families and communities to increase our enrollment, cuz that's very important to us, especially financially. Um, access to programs, like, um, we're lucky enough to participate in, um, dual-language immersion, um, and find that to be really amazing and a thing that brings people to our district. And then, college and career readiness, so making sure that our students are exposed to careers, um, whether or not they need to do post-secondary education to, uh, achieve those careers. That said, um, I appreciate, uh, that you feel very passionately about standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I personally, uh, don't sit or stand for your or for anyone else's approval. Um, and I hope that you can understand that that is, uh, my choice.
How is it racist?
I didn't make that claim, sir. Okay? Um, but I do find it kinda disappointing, the amount of, uh, fixation that you seem to do with Dr. Weisberg. Um, as our last speaker, uh, Mr. Smith said, um, you know, I think he said it best about that that's not what patriotism is about, that's not what, um, taking notes to the Constitution is about. And so, I really found your comment about the adult school and the loans to also be very productive. And so, I would really encourage you to bring those kinds of ideas here, instead of the fixation with Dr. Weisberg sitting or standing. Um, to the Smith family, welcome to Burbank. Um, we're glad to have you. Um, I think you will find it as a lovely place to be. I, uh, am not as familiar with the PE requirements, so I'm gonna pass on that one, but as a fellow runner, the idea of even when I was in eighth grade, running two miles in 25 minutes is a little intimidating. Um, so, I can see where the concerns lie there. Um, and then, lastly, welcome to Mr. Maxwell. Um, facilities is a messy and often thankless business, and as someone who lives very close to boroughs, I know we have rats in our neighborhood. I see them. And so, um, I wanna thank you for stepping up into the role, and we're, we're very happy to have you. I know that it can be, uh, a lot to be on the facility side of things, um, especially when you're not building fancy new buildings, but you're really trying to do, do maintenance and make sure that, uh, they're working for kids. And so, uh, welcome to you. Thank you, Board Member, Board President Tabit.
And congratulations on your first response.
Whew, I did it, guys. Thank you. Uh, first, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Noguera and everyone at the Burbank Adult School. Yesterday, Dr. Hill and I attended the pinning ceremony for the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mangle it, but maybe you can help me out with this, with the Certified Nurses Assistant. Is that right? Um, they were an amazing group. It was phenomenal to hear from them. Their, um, the two speeches that two of the students gave were like two of the best I've ever heard, but it was just phenomenal to see how proud they were of their work, and they're gonna go on to do amazing things. So, I wanna thank them for the invitation. I also wanna thank, uh, Jen Colbertson, uh, Board Member. Ponser Kampar and I were able to go do some yard supervision, uh, this week and help out, but I, I'll speak for myself, but I think you'd agree that the way that that community responds and interacts with one another is unbelievable. So, it was really great, even though we were there to supervise that yard. And we did. Um, it was really great to see how the kids interacted with their teachers and their intervention specialists, and just what a, it was just a really beautiful thing to experience. So, I wanted to thank both of them. Um, I also wanted to say to anybody here or anybody, uh, listening, and I've said this before in response to Mr. Schlossman's accusation, is that I take notes on my computer. To, to your point, I can't remember anything if I don't. So, anytime anyone talks, I, 25 pages in my two years so far, um, it helps me stay focused and organized, so I'm never doing anything else when anyone is talking. I am, in fact, trying to make sure that I give you the respect you deserve by writing down your concerns. Um, okay, so, uh, Ms. Gisella and Ms. Foster, thank you. This is not easy, right, to come here and speak publicly. It's scary, um, and I know you're dealing with a lot. One of the things that we can't talk about, right, is how much work goes on behind the scenes every day. And, and I want you to know that your concerns and Ms. Foster's concerns are of the utmost importance. Speaking with Dr. Hill and speaking with Dr. Paramo almost daily about this, um, I know it doesn't feel satisfying, but I can tell you how much this matters to them and how hard everybody is working to make sure that you feel heard and supported. I know it doesn't feel like that all the time, but I, I can assure you that they care so much, um, and we care so much. And the only reason I know that is because the number of emails and phone calls that, that they've had to deal with for me over the past week of like, what's going on? And explain this to me, and what can we say, and what can we not say? Because, I mean, as well you know, there's so many parameters on what we're able to share in this moment. But I know that Dr. Paramo and Dr. Hill and Ms. Kuseya, everybody's working with Burbank Police Department and with counseling and with the individual families and the students themselves to make sure they feel supported. But I do wanna say, too, you know, you referenced, and I think, um, Ever also referenced, other, other things that have occurred. Um, and I wanna make sure that those things are being shared, cuz I think sometimes, to your, I think to your point, people don't feel like they can come forward and talk about it, right, for totally valid reasons. They don't think anybody's gonna listen. They're too afraid, they don't want there to be retribution. But I wanna encourage people to know that there is a safe space to come talk with us or come talk with Dr. Paramo or Dr. Hill or Ms. Kuseya or, and I know it's, again, words are just words, right? Like, I could say anything to you, and it's not gonna change how you feel, but I, I do want you to know how seriously we're taking this. And I know that Dr. Paramo is taking a look at some of the procedures and processes to make sure that we have things in place, that there, I know we have things in place, but that they're clarified, so everybody knows those steps to take. Um, but I want you to feel like you can continue this conversation. Whether it's at a board meeting or an, you don't have to wait for a board meeting to shoot us an email, right, or to talk to any one of us. We're available to you all the time, so I don't want you to feel like you have to wait another two weeks or another month. We're here for you whenever you need us, not just for our teachers and our classified staff, but for you more than anything. So, I really hope you'll continue the conversation. Um, I, if you don't have our emails, I'll make sure you get it before you leave. But I, I thought, you know, you, you said something. You said, how would you react, um, to something happening to the people in your life? And, and I feel like you are the people in my life. Um, it's not, you know, I don't have, empathy isn't only caring when something happens to somebody that you're related to or you know. When something happens to you or other students, you are people in my life. I, I do care. I think we all feel that way. So, please, continue talking to us. So please continue talking to us. Please consent, continue bringing us your concerns. I know Dr. Paramo can, has continued to offer that dialogue and that this will change and grow and, um, to encourage other people who you've referenced to also come talk with us. So I, I hope at the very least you do feel heard, as, uh, board member Ponser Kamkar said. You have been, and I hope you will continue to feel that way. Thank you. And, and Ms. Foster also, I, I don't, I have no knowledge of the substitute teacher. I'm sure we will all be following up immediately to try to get some clarity on the situation. Um, my, I think it's, I, I teach middle school, teach seventh and eighth grade history. And sometimes it's, it's hard as I, as students come to you with their truth, right? And their, and their pain and their upsetness to then sort of sit down and go, okay, that's true. But what else might be true? What else has been done? I'm sure there have been things that have been done and I want to make sure that we get you those reassurances, that we get you that information. So knowing the way that our assistant superintendents and our superintendent are committed to these things. I, I'm speaking from a place of not knowing about this situation, but, um, I'm sure we will find out more in, in short order and that things have already been done. So hopefully we'll be able to share those things with you as soon as we're able. But appreciate you coming, um, and advocating tonight. To Mr. Arakanian, um, I'll simply say that, you know, discussing, as you said, um, your family and who you choose to love, uh, you're sexualizing that in a way that it isn't being sexualized. When someone talks about who they love and their families and their, I, gender identity, that's not sexual unless you make it so. So when you sexualize something that's very basic, if somebody told you that they were a woman and married to a man and had two kids, is that sexual? It's not sexual in nature, nor is a woman saying, this is my wife and here are two kids. Or a man saying, this is my husband and these are my two kids. So when you choose to sexualize that, I think the problem lies there, not with our teachers choosing to celebrate their identities and in so doing, encouraging students to celebrate their own. So I would ask you to really consider that. And I would also say that while this may be a season of Christ for you, it is not a season of Christ for everybody. As a Jewish person, I look forward to a couple of days celebrating Hanukkah. And there are people who don't celebrate either, who celebrate Kwanzaa, who celebrate nothing. So when you come up here and, and you speak about that, you exclude so many people, which I have to assume is not your intention. So I encourage you to continue to educate yourself. I know that you have, you know, your set beliefs and you're going to come here every month and say that. But I know I speak for everyone when I say, well, I continue to celebrate our teachers, classified staff and students and all aspects of who they are. Mr. Schlossman, rent is really expensive, so it's nice to take up, uh, so much space rent-free in somebody's head. It's nice because I already pay one rent, so I don't have to pay, pay two. I did a lot of work in, yeah, I did a lot of work in, um, New Orleans post Katrina for a couple of summers and I promise this is relevant. And one of the things, one of the things they told me in the lower ninth was that they would have buses of people that would drive through to look at how horrible things were and then just keep driving. And they called it disaster tourism. And I want to encourage you to stop your disaster tourism. You show up here and you wait for somebody to say something and then you pounce. The amount of hours that the people here spend dealing with the issues that you suddenly seem to care about are endless. There's so much work that happens that you don't give credit to or awareness of. Have you ever thought about emailing your questions or is it just the TV that you want? Do you care about our district or do you care about the attention? These people work night and day, as do we, to address these issues. So you come up here as if it's brand new information. It's not to us. You're not discovering anything. You are feeding off of the pain, discomfort, anxiety of people who come here with real issues. So I'm asking you to stop your disaster terrorism and care enough about the district to actually ask questions. Ms. Clark taught me something very early on. She told me that the way that I should, uh, respond to you, which has been very helpful, is to ask you if what you're saying benefits students, benefits our parents, benefits the district and our teachers. And if it doesn't, then to stop. So I'm asking you, if it doesn't benefit anybody in the district, to please stop. To please choose to have empathy for people, not selectively when it gets you some more public comment time. And I know you got another card, so we'll see you again shortly and that'll be fun for everybody. But I want to encourage you to ask questions instead of making accusations. And I know you're just, you know, you've blocked me out. But I do want to encourage you to stop your disaster tourism and to truly support this district and the work that's being done. You had some good ideas there about the adult school. That's great. I hope you bring more of those. To Mr. and Mrs. Smith, Mr. Smith, thank you so much for your service. And thank you so much for, uh, what I thought was a really powerful and succinct way of discussing, uh, the true meaning of patriotism. I'm not usually succinct, so you did a wonderful job and I'm deeply appreciative, um, of both your service to our country and your understanding of what that, uh, service allows people like me to do. I don't know very much about the graded runtime. I can tell you I would have failed the living bejesus out of it. I walked all the time, but, um, I'm sure we can get more information on that and it sounds like it's an ongoing, uh, conversation. But thank you so much for, for being part of the community and for caring enough about BUSD to bring these concerns to us. Um, and also to Mr. Maxwell, I hear that you worked the entire weekend? Just, just a little bit of the weekend, but I, I think it's been really powerful to see both Mr. Cantwell and you. I had a teacher say, well, Mr. Cantwell was in my classroom at 10:00 PM examining some of the issues that were raised, that the two of you are setting this standard for a real, uh, investment and hopefully it won't have to be weekends forever, but that you care so much and the example that you're setting is, is really commendable and I'm deeply appreciative to you after just one whole week. So I look forward to working with you. I hope you know that the board is, uh, here to support you in any way that we can. Um, and I look forward to future conversations. So thank you and welcome. And happy Hanukkah to everybody who celebrates.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you very much. Um, thank you to everybody who came down for public comment tonight. Certainly appreciate, uh, all the lively views, uh, that could express at our microphone. Um, and so I will start with a, a broad happy holidays to everybody, uh, and wishing you the best. To our students, uh, at Burrows, including Geneva, who's here tonight, first of all, um, thank you so much for coming down. Uh, you spent some time with us tonight. So, and it's also getting late. So, um, you know, again, just appreciate your time with us and your faith, uh, in this forum, uh, as a place to get help. Obviously a lot that we can't say, uh, because it's ongoing. You're aware of that. You, you, you get that. But what I want you to know more than anything is that this is an institution that when things happen and when you tell people, we, we do everything we can to prepare people for that moment, the adults who receive that information. And we do all we can, uh, to ensure everybody is safe. Um, that is our mission. That is our core. Um, I know that there's a lot going on and some people may disagree with that. Some people, there, there's a lot of different views on that. Um, but as somebody who has been here a little bit longer than most of the folks here, except for this one, I will tell you, um, we work really hard on that. And so your concerns aren't falling on deaf ears. And if anybody's ever in trouble and, um, they need help, they can go to an adult. And if that adult doesn't help, you can go to another adult. Uh, why? Because you shouldn't have to shop around. I'm not saying that. But what I am saying is that that's our job and we love each of you and feel inherently responsible for that. You get one, one shot at growing up, right? And so we've got to do everything we can to remember that, um, whether we're up here or whether we're on a school site. Sometimes we need to be reminded by that, about that. And your comments tonight remind me of that and how precious this is. Either way, everybody involved, they're going through a lot of pain right now. They're really suffering. And lives are changed forever, right? Right? Yours is, even ours are in terms of how we are able and what we're able to do in response to this moment. Everybody that needs to be focused on this is, I promise you that. And, uh, we will continue to hear more behind the scenes, but in the meantime, I hope you feel heard. I, I think if there are lessons to be learned, we will be able to walk away from that. But I think there isn't a person up, up here who isn't committed to that. Okey doke. Um, again, thank you for your time tonight. More than anything, I can see how much you're committed and to our parents in the audience as well, um, who are concerned about this. Um, fundamentally, uh, as we work our way through this, this is going to take a process. This inevitably, everybody I think understands that. Um, but again, if there are lessons to be learned, we will learn. Um, and we will demonstrate, um, how important it is, uh, that we, uh, are responsible for people's safety and, and why people should trust that we can handle that incredibly, uh, high responsibility. Okey doke. Looking at my notes, the first thing that pops out is disaster tourism. So thank you, Dr. Weisberg. You know, I, again, this is a forum where it, it's hard at times to, to accept the different points of view. Uh, it's hard at times, um, to hear it. Even though things aren't personally said about me at times, there is language that's used that really impacts a community that I, I certainly represent. And it makes me feel less than human. That happens. And we do that to each other rather commonly. That's part of the human experience is dehumanizing one another, making us feel like, even though we all have earned our place in this world, that we don't deserve a seat at that table. But we rise past it because that's one of the fundamental lessons in life, right? Is to be seen despite it. So whether it's in the guise of religious views or in attacks of a board member's choice to display patriotism differently. I think we got to love each other a little bit more and accept that we're all a little weird and we all do it our own way. And at the end of the day, we're better for it. When we don't, excuse me, here's the deal. It also involves us listening respectfully. You had your time and, and I appreciate that you've always given me that, that time back as well. But we express it differently at times. And I don't always feel that the attacks, as elected officials, we have to put up with a lot and we should. Otherwise, what are you doing here? But sometimes it crosses a line. And in a new responsibility and a new job that I have, which I'm very excited about because I earned it, with only frankly, the formal education of, that has come from these institutions. I sat with my back to screaming protesters, people on the edge of certainly emotional harm. And that's in Los Angeles City Hall. And never in my life have I felt unsafe physically in a civic forum before. And that has happened multiple times in the past week, multiple times in the past two weeks, where my physical safety, uh, has been a serious question. And that comes from rhetoric getting too hot. Feeling like it's okay to disqualify certain voices and to not just say, I see you and I hear you. So again, I want to hear you as a leader. I promise to struggle, even if I don't agree with you, to hear you. But the rhetoric's got to tone down a little bit because just because we can trust you to stay beyond some guardrails, doesn't mean somebody at home isn't motivated to jump up and over those guardrails. And I would hate for any one of my colleagues to get hurt. It is possible. When I started my term on the Board of Education, I was at one of these board meetings and my car window was knocked out. It's real. They wanted me to stop. They wanted me to stop talking. Think my colleagues showed you tonight, I haven't stopped talking. But we've got to stop. We've got to be better than that in this community of all communities. So even if you disagree, I think there's a way to register that. But our voices are powerful and, and we've got to love each other enough not to help people get up and over the edge. As a point of personal privilege, um, I used to work for a man, uh, named Assembly Member Nazarian, who worked actively on behalf of young people in this community and across the state of California. Part of his legacy includes opening college savings accounts for 3.4 million California children, helping them to establish a pathway to college savings and ultimately college and higher education. Uh, I'm very proud, uh, to have been able to work for that man. He also worked to pass state funding to help with plant-based meals, to offer, uh, meal alternatives in this past budget so that school districts could both observe religious observances, um, it, when it comes to diet as well as just frankly, health and nutrition needs. He lost his father this past week. And so, uh, uh, as a point of personal privilege, uh, I would like to ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in, uh, honor of Alexander Nazarian, who, um, brought into this world, uh, a young man who came here on a plane at eight years old from Iran and changed California history. Um, and, and certainly made an impact, uh, in my life. And I'm here now, uh, and also in the lives of Burbank Unified Youth. Um, and that we prepare a certificate to that effect, uh, to communicate our condolences. Thank you very much. And last thing, to all of our employees, happy holidays and thank you.
Thank you. Geneva, thank you for coming down tonight. Coming down by yourself. Most high school students do things in groups and here you are waiting, stood up at that microphone and spoke your mind and, uh, quite brave. And so thank you for doing that. And as my colleagues have all said, please, please know that there are many, many caring adults who will listen, who want to hear what you have to say, including this board, including the counselors at your school site, including the mental health facility, um, at your school site, admin team, teachers. Please don't stop sharing and saying what you need to say so that you can come to school to feel safe. I think that's really important. Um, and I'm pretty impressed that you're still here and came down to speak. Sometimes though, it doesn't, uh, speaking up doesn't always necessarily mean that, well, well, adults will be working to do what they can and what we can share so that you can feel safe. Sometimes it, the process takes a while or you may not see, uh, big changes happening right away. But just know that adults are working on things so that these situations, uh, change or the, so the situation changes. Okay? This was quite the, yeah. Mr. Arakalian, thank you again for coming down and speaking your thoughts. Is he still here? Okay. Sometimes I, I choose to respond and sometimes I don't. And I don't want anyone to think that by not responding to someone that, that I'm necessarily in agreement. That couldn't be farther from the case. And while Mr. Arakalian seems like a very kind man, uh, our thoughts do not agree at all. So, um, and I think Mr. Our doctor, excuse me, Dr. Hill, uh, answered both of his questions that he asked, so I don't need to go further there. I just wanted to be clear that I didn't necessarily agree. To the Smiths, thank you for your, uh, your, To the Smiths, thank you for your input. I don't remember as a student at Burbank Unified doing any runs in PE, but that was a really long time ago, so the change may have come after that, but my three children certainly complained about the run, and they went to Muir, and Muir's field is on a hill, so you're running down and back up, and down and back up. And they also did another run around the outside of the school, where they really ran up and down a hill. So, yeah, they couldn't see the benefits of that either. So, I know Dr. Hill talked about the PE committee that works on what goes on in our classes, and to make sure that the assessments and the things that students do each day are aligned to the standards. So hopefully, the committee will be looking at that, at the runs, and I see Dr. Pramo shaking his head. So, it's like I told Geneva, change is slow, but people are talking about it and working on it, so hopefully, we'll get to that while your students are still, to the Smiths, while your students are still in our schools, and will benefit from whatever the decisions are made. And Dory, thank you again for also coming down and sharing your thoughts. It's important that the students also know that there are parents who pay attention and listen, and that are making sure that their students are safe for all students, or schools are safe for all students, not just their own. And I know you don't even have a student yet at Burrows, I don't believe, right? But you're paying attention, and you're listening, and making sure that the adults in the room are doing what they're supposed to be doing too. So I thank you for being that watchful, caring eye. It's important. I also, also want to say, which I haven't yet, to say a very, very huge, with a lot of love, thank you to Kimberly Clark. For the nine years I've been on the board, you have been the go-to person who makes our life on the board easier, you've taken care of us, you've arranged trips to CSBA, you've shared with us how to get things accomplished, where to go, what to do, how to do it, and all with a smile and graciously. And I'm so excited for your next journey. I think the city of Burbank is extremely lucky to have you in that office across the way and downstairs, and anybody who, who, the phrase, well, you know, the loss of the district, lucky city, to get you, yeah, but you know what? We all know where you're at. If we need you, we're gonna come find you. You're not out of our lives, you're just in a different location. And so, the board brought you some flowers to thank you for your service, and I've been sitting too long. Thank you all. And congratulations again.
Thanks.
And also, a welcome to Dennis Maxwell. Dennis, you know I was a big fan from your first day, what, six months ago, maybe?
A year?
Little over a year. See how time flies when we're having fun? We, Dennis was on a break a couple of times. We met at a bagel shop, and we met at Corner Cottage. No, you're allowed to take a break and grab something to eat, it's okay. And always, always pleasant and kind, and knowledgeable, and is going to bring a lot to that position, and we're extremely lucky that he chose to come work for us. So thank you very much, and looking forward to you expanding on what Mr. Cross has already started. So greatly appreciated. All right, enough talking.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask that, I know you did the flowers, but you know, when Rose Garcia retired, we did a little bit of a plaque and a thing. Can I ask the superintendent to prepare a certificate and a plaque for Ms. Clark for her years of service to the board, and dress this up a bit? I appreciate the flowers, but it's been a long time, and it just doesn't align with what we've done previously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for thinking of that. Moving on, if we can, everyone's probably like, yes, please. Reports to the Board, 13A, District Legal Counsel, Presentation on the California Voting Rights Act and the Process for Transition to Bi-Trustee Area Elections.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Hill, staff, members of the public that are still with us. You're pulling up my presentation? Okay, thank you. So I am here to do, well, later on your agenda, you have an action item for a resolution of intent to transition to bi-trustee area elections. And this presentation will be the first of many you will get over the next few months by me and a district demographer, if the Board adopts that resolution. And this was a powerful board meeting, I didn't expect this experience, but this conversation tonight about voices and being heard, I think really kind of ties in to this conversation we're gonna have about the Voting Rights Act and transitioning to bi-trustee area elections, because when you talk about voices, vote is your voice. And what this transition is about, is about making sure people's votes matter, that their votes are heard, and that their votes count. So, thank you. So are you gonna flip for me, or?
Would you like me to? I could definitely do that.
All right, let's do this as a team. So what we'll talk about first is kind of the election method you're using. What are the options to elect board members for school districts in California? We'll talk about what is the California Voting Rights Act, what's its purpose, intent, and that's what kind of brings us here tonight. And then we'll talk about the process for moving to your current election system to a bi-trustee area election system. Then I'll note some other considerations, and obviously, I'll remain as long as you want to ask questions, but as I'm going through the presentation, if you have questions or want clarification, please ask me, okay? Next slide. So like I said, by California statute, there are three election methods that can be used to elect board members for school districts. And for decades, the predominant method of election was the at-large election method, which is what the district currently does. The other two is what's called a hybrid election system, and we'll talk about what that is. And then there's the district-based or bi-trustee area election system. So you'll hear it referred to both ways, district-based or bi-trustee, it means the same thing. Next slide. So what is the California Voting Rights Act? It essentially prohibits the use of an at-large election system that results in racially polarized voting. And racially polarized voting is essentially voting in your jurisdiction that essentially prohibits or precludes race, color, language minorities that are in protected classes from either electing candidates of their choice, or to otherwise influence the outcome of elections. And this can be your board elections, it can be ballot measures, anything that gets on the ballot. Next slide. So I think we all know what an at-large election is. You just had that, congratulations to the new board members and those who were re-elected, but essentially, that's everyone, every voter in your jurisdiction gets to vote for that seat, right? Next slide. And then you have the bi-trustee area elections, which is, the jurisdiction of the district doesn't change, the boundaries remain the same, but it gets divided up into seats. So you're a five-member board, so it'd be divided into five trustee areas. And in that system, you have to be a resident within a particular district, and you only get to vote for candidates in your district, and the candidates also have to live in your district. So on my example here, if you're a resident in Election District Five, you can't vote for the candidates that are running in Election District One, right? Simple as it gets. Next slide. Hybrid is a combination of the two, thus, it's called a hybrid. And in that system, you still have the trustee areas, but you still have at-large voting. So you, as the candidate, would have to reside within a particular area, but everyone within the district would still vote for you, and still have the chance to elect you. So those are the three methods. Next slide. And essentially, what the California Voting Rights Act does is it creates essentially a preference for, and an incentive to transition from at-large to bi-trustee area, because it creates essentially, it says, you can't be sued for a violation of the California Voting Rights Act if you have a bi-trustee area election system. And the California Voting Rights Act treats the hybrid system and the at-large system the same for purposes of whether or not there's potentially racially polarized voting, and whether or not you can be within a safe harbor. And the reason they get, they're treated the same is, in both of those systems, right, you have the at-large voting, which is what the legislature has decided it doesn't want to promote. And what it's created is, a plaintiff, who's anyone within, a voter within your jurisdiction, can submit a demand letter that says, you use an at-large or hybrid system, we believe that violates the California Voting Rights Act because it creates racially polarized voting, and unless you transition to a bi-trustee area system, we're gonna sue you, okay? And if you receive a letter like that, you have two options. You can either agree to transition within the safe harbor, and there's a particular timeline and process for that, we'll talk about in a moment, or you can say, "We disagree", and potentially face the lawsuit. I'll tell you, in probably the decade, two decades that this has been going on, no public agency, whether school district, city, special district, has been successful in one of those litigations, and most have settled. The only case where there's been a, at least a winning decision, has been for the city of Santa Monica on appeal, but that's now before the California Supreme Court, and who knows how that's gonna come out? All right. So it really has high cost. Many times, the fight has been millions of dollars in attorney's fees. I think in the Santa Monica case, the plaintiff's attorney's fee demand was about $22 million. So there's some practicality to transitioning. All right. Next slide. All right. So what is the process? Well, you receive a demand letter, which the district received. You have 45 days from receipt of the demand letter to adopt a resolution of your intention to transition, and that's the resolution you have on your agenda tonight. So you're well within that 45-day requirement period. Next slide. And the process is pretty simple on its face. Once you adopt the resolution of intent, then you hold what are called two pre-map hearings. We said, "We're gonna hire a demographer, they're ultimately gonna draw some sample maps for you." But before any maps are drawn, you have to have these two hearings where, I'll present again, the demographer will present and give you a lot of data about the rules for drawing the maps. They'll talk a lot about things like communities of interest, and compactness, and, you know, other parameters on how you draw the maps. And you'll hold a public hearing, where you'll get input from your community about, what should those maps look like? What are our communities of interest? What do we want to preserve? Where do we want the lines drawn, for what reason? You'll have the first one, you'll have another pre-map hearing within 30 days of the first, you'll get more input, and then after that, your demographer will draw the first set of maps. And usually, they'll draw three to five, sometimes it's more, depends upon the community and district. And then you'll publish those maps, and you'll hold what's called a post-map hearing, the first. And what'll happen there is, the community will have had a chance to view those maps, the demographer will likely do another presentation, so you're gonna hear a lot from your demographer, and you'll hold another public hearing. And community members will say, "We like this map, we hate this map, what about this line, what about this line?" Demographer will take all that information in, including information from you, and go back and either retool maps, draw new maps, and those will be published, and we'll hold another public hearing, and we'll take more input, ultimately resulting in a final map that this Board will approve. Along with the map, you have to have a sequence of elections in the new trustee areas. So when we, when those maps are presented to you, we'll also work with staff and the demographer to put together some sample sequences of election. And you'll get more data about this, because there's many things that go into there, right? This is the first presentation. And then you'll adopt the map, you'll adopt a sequencing schedule, and then all this will be presented to the County Committee on Reorganization, who ultimately has to approve that, right? And so they'll hold a hearing, and representatives of the district will present, members of the public will be able to speak, and once that process is done, you will have successfully transitioned to bi-trustee area elections, just like that. Next slide. Okay, so I talked about this. Next slide. So some important basic information is, this does not affect the terms of current sitting board members. You will serve out your at-large terms. Where it becomes tricky is what happens, for example, if you're in a district, your term is up in, say, 2024, but you haven't sequenced the election for that district in 2024, right? And so we'll have to talk about those things. Or you could be in the same district, yeah. Yeah, depending upon where people live, and how those lines are drawn. And like I said earlier, the external boundaries of the entire district don't change at all. Okay? Next slide. So, this is a team approach, takes a village to move from at-large to bi-trustee area elections, and so you'll have legal counsel, you'll have a demographer, we'll work with the superintendent and his staff for notices and agendas, and all the things that go into this, and as part of this, while, you know, the requirement... while, you know, the, the requirements are minimal in terms of the meetings, there's a, there's a great push for community outreach. And the county committee is gonna expect to see that we've had a robust community outreach. So many things that, that districts and boards consider are community input events beyond the required public hearings. You know, getting this out on your social media, multiple languages. Um, maybe partnering and reaching out to different interest groups within the community. And those, those are things that we can talk about. But we should be intentional about that outreach in, in your community. Next slide. So best practices, track, track our efforts, right? Let's be intentional about that. Plus, we're gonna wanna package all this to the county committee so that they know we did a great job, we're a, we're a model district. Um, consider all feedback from the community and have multiple streams and mechanism that they can provide that, whether it's a survey. It shouldn't be just, you know, they need to come to our public hearings, or they, they need to submit a comic card, or whatever it is. Um, and creates one, one place where they can get information. So typically, it's on a dedicated page on the website. And we'll post the schedule. Uh, we'll post prior presentations, you'll post your maps, obviously. Sequence of elections, oftentimes we'll do a question and answer that's on that website, so people can go there and get that information. Next slide. And that's it for tonight. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Uh, not, not so many questions, uh, as a request. One, you know, uh, thank you first of all for, for the presentation. I, uh, would like us to potentially explore, in the course of this conversation, expanding the number of board members from five to seven. Um, there are districts of similar size and population, uh, namely Santa Monica, Malibu, uh, who represents roughly the same in population. And, um, they have seven council members, seven, uh, in Santa Monica, uh, and seven trustees for both, uh, both cities. Um, and, and I think Burbank's big enough, uh, to do that. Uh, there, I think there are benefits to that. It also allows for more localized accountability for board members. So roughly fifteen thousand people per district, et cetera. So, uh, I would like us to consider, you know, what could potentially be imp- uh, prohibit that kind of conversation, whether that's, uh, whether it needs to be a charter amendment, uh, or whether or not we can do that independently by resolution. Um, I think this would give more voices at the table, which I think is fundamentally what this process is all about. Um, and, and kind of, uh, frankly, prepare and build this institution for the long-term future. Um, we've had roughly the same system of government, uh, for about eighty years, uh, as a, as a school district. And I think, um, a part of our responsibility of trustees is not just to draw lines that secure for five more people to take our seats. Um, but frankly, uh, to think about what's good for the future, uh, of this community. I think with increased density, and you name it, in the area, uh, I think seven makes sense. Um, and it may be time for our council colleagues to consider the same, uh, even if it involves some kicking and screaming. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you for that suggestion. And speaking of our council colleagues, um, my understanding is that they will be going through a similar process. Is there any way to collaborate with them? Obviously not on the maps themselves, but at least on like the demographer sharing any of the data around demographics. Um, because I know this is not exactly a, a cheap endeavor, but I'm very supportive of it.
Yeah, there definitely can be some economies of scale there from the data that the demographer is gonna have to use. Um, so if, if, certainly if the city's pursuing that, we can have that conversation.
Okay. And can you just remind me, um, what, what do you think is the total timeframe of this? To like, get all the way to maps accepted?
Yeah, great question. So, once you've adopted the resolution of intent, say, tonight, um, the timeline for the safe harbor requires it to, for our final step to be done within ninety days. I mean, we can't control what, yes, the, what the county committee, committee does. There is a process by which, with the agreement of plaintiff, you can extend that by another ninety days for a total of a hundred and eighty days. Um, but the legislature was very intentional in requiring this to be done quickly.
Just kind of responding, uh, to Ms. Ponser Kamkar. It, you know, one of the considerations, I, you know, I think we can work with our city colleagues as, you know, as best as possible on this front. Because of how district lines, I think one of the major concerns with districts, especially, at least that, from my, my paradigm is we've got, uh, two comprehensive high schools, uh, community day school, Monterey, you name it. And we never want to be in a situation where, uh, you have three board members because population is concentrated on the hillside, uh, potentially directing funding and making funding decisions that then impact, uh, frankly, the outcomes on flatlands where, you know, we live. Um, or vice versa, right? Uh, and so one, I think expanding the number of seats answers for that by creating smaller districts, which inevitably would, you know, break up uh, and kind of create shared destinies more uniformly. Uh, and then the second component that I think is important about it as well, uh, i- is that there may be schools, uh, that we wanna draw into certain districts so that way, nobody over-represents elementary schools versus middle schools versus, so. So that's where I just, um, I, I think there would be, it would be lovely if we could draw every line the same. I think also less confusing. Or, or at least, you know, try and match pitch or match process a bit, or share, uh, share costs as we go through this process. I think that's possible, but I, I will say, I think as we're, we're drawing, and I, and I don't see disagreement from you, um, that, that we, we're inclusive of, you know, those, those factors as we draw lines.
Yeah, my proposal is really just that we have the same data that we're starting from. Not that we have the same lines. Because we have very different interests.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay, great.
Thanks.
Question. When districting, are we required then to represent the, only the districts in our, are only the school sites in our district? Can it continue so that we may be elected by a district, but we still represent all the schools?
Yes, the, the, the statute doesn't address this at all. So you're elected to a particular district by the residents of that district. But from a governance standpoint, you're still representing the entire district.
That makes me feel a lot better.
Well, kind of, though, I have to, I have to say this, though. Like, so in that scenario, yes, trustees should look out for the interest of everybody in the district. But if you have a thousand, fifteen hundred people who are motivated, let's say, by a theater program, um, this is not an unfamiliar example. And that program is potentially cut, but the program across the way, uh, at Burbank High, let's say, uh, is on the line as well. Your voters may vote against you in that next election if you don't get that theater program and cut the school across the way. So there are impacts. And so that's why I think, you know, again, creating districts that are smaller potentially frankly breaks that influence up a bit. Um, and so that's, that's a, a part of the motivation for me proposing expanding the number of board seats in total. Um, I, I don't, I have to say, I don't love expanding board seats either. It, it weakens the board, uh, in its checks over the superintendent and administration. I don't love that, um, clearly. Um, but I do think that, you know, this is a city that's growing. And when we're the, an eighth the size of Wyoming, uh, in turn, in population, uh, we need to put this in paradigm and understand. I, I hate saying it, folks, I got more votes than Pete Buttigieg did for mayor, uh, when I ran for school board the first time. That's the reality. So in our population, we need to understand we're bigger than we think. But, uh, if you are from this area, you are conditioned to see population differently.
I have lots of questions about this. But, um, so I'm curious, does the statute, um, limit you to kind of having mutually exclusive districts, right? So I know we talked about the hybrid model, right? Where all the trustees have to be from different places, but people elect, um, as a group. Uh, but is there a way to like, do kind of overlapping districts essentially? Where people are voting essentially in every election, but then I've got two representatives as a voter, rather than only one?
Yeah, um, as far as I know, we got three options.
Okay. Fair enough. And that is why I asked. Okay, thank you.
I'm sure more questions will come up as we go through this process. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
And certainly, as, as you go back, if there are particular questions that you have, and I'm not here for a presentation or whatever, communicate them to the superintendent and we can certainly address those.
Thank you for staying all night with us.
Congratulations.
All right. Moving on to thirteen B. Luther Burbank Middle School Enrollment and Staffing Plan, Dr. Paramo.
Good evening, President Tabit, distinguished board members, Superintendent Hill, district staff, and members of the, uh, community. My name is John Paramo, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services. My pronouns are he, him. Um, tonight, I have a presentation and a plan to present to the board uh, to address staffing and enrollment at Luther Burbank, Burbank Middle School. And I think that, uh, in order for me to get to the last slide, where I'm actually presenting a plan, I think we need to understand the situation within a context. And I think that requires us to look at some data. So I have some data to share with you. So this slide is looking at a four-year, uh, trend of enrollment for all three middle schools. So this is total enrollment. And you can see that in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we had much larger enrollment than we have over the last couple of years, and that it has, has continued to decline with a couple of bloopers, uh, to be honest. But, uh, if you look at Luther exclusively, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, they had nine hundred and thirty-one students. And they dropped down twenty-one, twenty-two to eight hundred and eighteen. They've gone up a little bit this year, but it was definitely not what we had projected. And so their enrollment was lower than what we had hoped that it would be. Um, but you can see that trend is similar to our other middle schools as well. Next slide. Uh, wanna talk a little bit about staffing. And if you look at this chart, I think the most important thing for me to point out is that this includes all staffing, all teachers, includes special ed. So we are looking at every single teacher. Uh, and again, you can see that with declining enrollment, our staffing has declined. So, uh, four years ago, Luther had forty-three teachers, they have thirty-eight now. Um, you know, Muir's, uh, enrollment has been pretty steady. It's got, it's gone up this last year. So four years ago, they had sixty teachers, they have fifty-nine. So, uh, you can, you can see where the disparities are. Uh, Huerta is, has had a, a decline in teachers, um, probably more so than Luther. They had forty-seven teachers four years ago, and they dropped down to forty this year. So this is the slide that the teachers at Luther really want me to take my time and explain it because the data doesn't necessar- it, it, it's tricky data if you look at it. So what this slide is trying to represent is how many intra-district transfers are ea- at each of the three middle schools. So if you look at the third column and you see total permits, it looks like Luther has the most at one hundred and twenty-two. But in actuality, they have more kids leaving. So if you look at it in terms of, well, how many are they actually gaining? Minus sixteen, Huerta minus twelve, Muir is getting twenty-eight students. So one of the things that I need the public to understand is that when you see minus sixteen and you see minus twelve, it looks like there's a negative impact to their enrollment. But we don't automatically move all the kids that want to leave at the time, uh, at the beginning of the summer, at the time that we normally let everybody go. What we do is we hold on to those. So at Luther, we would hold on to these sixteen kids, this minus sixteen kids, until the end of the summer. And we would look to see how many inter-permits come in. And if we have sixteen or more inter-permits come in, then we'll let the sixteen intras go ahead and go to the school of their choice. So we are trying to stabilize and not create any negative impact to any of the middle schools. And that, the same goes the, for Huerta as well, we're doing the same process. Inter-permits, um, we have eighty-five active at, uh, Huerta, a hundred and forty-three active at Luther, and ninety-five at Muir. Uh, community wants to know what the feeder schools are for Luther. Um, so these are actual numbers based on this year's fifth grade class. So they typically get fifty-one percent of Edison, one hundred percent of Hart, one hundred percent of Providencia, twenty-five percent of Roosevelt. Ten at Stevenson, that's, that's a little high. It ranges from five to ten, depending on the year. And Washington, about fifty percent. So when we, I look at current eighth grade, I'm sorry, current fifth grade classes, these are actual numbers. So these percentages match up with the number of students. So, um, two hundred and fifty-four is the total for their sixth grade class. So, uh, based on the data, we have been working with the staff at Luther over the entire fall semester. We've been meeting with them, uh, with the exception of, um, one date that we missed because we were doing interviews for the principal at Luther, but we've been meeting regularly with them. And what we are proposing is something that we have talked about, it's been vetted with their staff, uh, and they feel good about this. One is to guarantee staffing levels with supplemental or other ongoing funding, even if enrollment drops further. So, uh, we'd like to restore the full-time art teacher. We'd like to restore a full-time assistant principal that has been missing for a few years. And right now, we have three point six PE teachers. It should be four, so we're trying to put the other point four in. So they have two female PTE teachers and two male PE teachers. We'd also like to change feeder school patterns so that all Washington families will go to Luther, uh, except for siblings and DHH students. Uh, the DHH program is at Muir, so the, the kids that are, need DHH services would stay at Muir. Continue to outreach and promote Luther during enrollment season. Continue one-for-one intra-district enrollment practice. And also to continue to brainstorm ways to attract inter-district permits. I would be open for any questions you might have.
Uh, just a clarification. So when we're talking, for number one, the guaranteeing staffing levels, is that just one, two, and three? Or is it the staffing levels as is and additionally arts teacher, AP, PE teacher?
It, it's maintaining what they have now and then adding those three back, so it's a dish.
That's what I, that one was.
And the first one, uh, just so you know, funding sources, Prop twenty-eight is the new arts grant, and that'd be the arts teacher. Uh, you'll see later in the one-time funding, the recommendation for the assistant principal. And then we would look at the general fund for that point four for the PE teachers.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Um, so on solution number two, around Washington Elementary, um, so is that, is that final? Have you heard from parents at Washington Elementary about that decision? Tell me a little bit more.
So we had a Zoom, a town hall meeting with the Washington families. We were able to ask, get questions, answer the questions. Um, and then we, we sent out a letter to all the families. So that, that is final. Uh, we've had that dialogue with that community. We had a family talk about just transportation issues going from Muir, uh, to Luther. So we asked them to follow up. We haven't heard back from that family.
Okay, thank you.
We also have a great cheerleader at Washington Elementary with Laura Vineyard being the principal and former assistant principal at Luther, so that has helped.
Yeah.
Hi there. Um, thank you for this report. I, you know, I will say, you know, if I'm a member of the Luther community and I'm looking at these numbers, twenty twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two, and I'm looking at these numbers, 2021 to 2122, looks suspicious. It's a big drop, right? It's a classroom and a half of kids that just miraculously, you know, drop out of the way. And it meets with a lot of narratives out there that Luther is forgotten, that, you know, maybe somebody said something, you know, what happened here? And so, I think that this is the first report, but I think we need to continue this conversation as there's an entire community, frankly, of professionals who, you know, again, are looking at charter schools, frankly, as an option because they're worried about the decline of this school and this institution. And look, you know, frankly, charter schools are very motivated to see numbers like this in our community, and those who have worked in the charter school industry know, you know, that that's quite possible in this community. So, I want to be cognizant of that fact because I think we do a good job in that we provide a robust public education that shouldn't require additional options for parents like that. But when you see numbers like this, and they frankly fluctuate. So, in such a big way, again, like, pretty small campus, to lose 50 kids, like, you're going to notice that. So, I think for members of the community who are out there who have these concerns, they're well-founded. And I just hope that we can continue to monitor this, and especially towards the end of the year as we're starting to talk about enrollment projections that we put Luther at the top of the pile, and that we talk about what that's going to look like.
Not a problem.
Thank you. I also am losing a principal, apologies. All of this together doesn't look good.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on then to 13C, one-time funding recommendations.
Can I ask, we delayed the election of officers because Dr. Agarconian isn't here. Can I ask that we delay the one-time funding presentations and then the committee assignments item as well to the next meeting?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, makes sense.
Are there any impacts if we delay the funding recommendation piece?
No impacts. It's a two-step process. This was just to collect board feedback this evening, but I can bring it back for the vote at the next meeting.
Full board.
Yep, yeah.
That's good. All right, that moves us to report on facilities and technology projects. 13D.
We didn't vote on the tabling.
Oh.
Sorry, Madam President, I won't run the meeting.
It's okay, sir. Both at the same time, we'll move both to the November meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
January meeting.
To the January meeting. Thank you. The only January meeting. We only have one. Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. The board has decided.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Mr. Cantwell is ill this evening, so I will be doing the facilities update. We have two items this evening. The first item is the expansion of the portable hand-washing stations at Disney, part of the project. So, you'll see a change order on that of $1,300. And then the second one we heard earlier is about the trees that are going to be installed on campus. These are the same trees that are in the front of the school as well as in the yard of the school. So, it matches those. Mr. Cross did work with Mariposa, the tree company that we work with, to recommend trees. They do drop pods, but they felt like that was the best solution for where we're putting the trees. And then Ms. Morrison asked who's going to be responsible for that. That's part of the custodial on the grounds crew to make sure that we're maintaining the blacktop. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, 14, new and indoor and/or unfinished business. 14A, adoption of Resolution 12, initiating a transition to bi-trusty area election system, commencing with the 2024 governing board election.
President Tabit.
Yes, Mr. President.
I'll move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 12 and waive the reading, initiating a transition to bi-trusty area election system. To a bi-trusty area election system, commencing with the 2024 governing board elections as presented.
Thank you for the motion and the second.
If I could also clarify, exploring potentially expanding the board to seven as well in that, in that motion.
I'm okay with that. Okay.
Second? Okay, great.
So, we have a motion and a second by Dr. Weisberg. Is that you?
All day, every day.
Okay. Did you get Mr. Ferguson's? Yes.
Including the exploration of that. Yeah, I know. I want to be clear that, you know.
We're not committed to that.
Yep, it'll get legal counsel to be able to look into it. Great.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. 14B, approval of memorandum of understanding with, oh, I'm so sorry, to Zackle, Community Development Corporation? Close enough?
Dr. Hill?
We actually have our partners in the audience here today, and they would like to make a brief presentation on this item so that the community is aware of this exciting partnership. After you make the motion, I'll.
It'd also be great to, I would love to learn how to pronounce the name correctly.
Can we see the presentation and then motion?
Sure.
Great.
It's a verbal presentation, but if I could have Mr. Rivers and Mr. Aguilar come on up. And thank you so much. I estimated 10 o'clock as the end.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have some words later.
Yeah. I owe you some Starbucks coffee. Okay.
Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you very much, Mr. Hill and Mr. Pomeroy. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Shannon Rivers. I'm Director of Programming for the Native Ways to College. And this is Mr. Aguilar, and I'll allow him to introduce himself.
My name is Marcos Aguilar. My name is Marcos Aguilar. Good evening, brothers and sisters. I'm the Executive Director of Anawak Almekak. We're a charter school in East LA. Been around 20 years. We're the only Indigenous Peoples Charter School. But as an expansion, in order to support Indigenous students across LA County, we partnered with the Office of Indian Education, the US Department of Education, to provide college access pathway programming. And so, we're here to reach out to your district to see if we can support American Indian students that are eligible for the programs in your district and see how we can help those amazing high school graduation rates turn into amazing college preparation rates.
And so, what you have before you is the memorandum of understanding between us and the Burbank Unified School District. And in general, it is an agreement between us and you that we have the support from the superintendent and your office regarding Native American students here. We know that the population may look low here, but in Los Angeles is the home to over 170,000 Native Americans in Los Angeles County. We also know it's the largest, largest community or member of Native Americans here in the United States that live in Los Angeles. We also know that some of the numbers do not add up. And we want your help to find those Native American students and so that we can offer them culturally relevant services. And basically, that's what the MOU is asking you to do. It's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. And we thank the superintendent for allowing us to be here tonight. So, thank you very much. If you have any questions, we're here.
Can you help us with the pronunciation before we butcher it once again?
Sorry. So, Cika, Cika is the name of one of the smallest ants that we have. And so, we represent this work as the work of the ants, you know, just helping, helping to move us along with that ancestral wisdom. We say that the corn was brought to us by the ants ancestrally. And we know that we are in our territory wherever we see our people grow corn.
Thank you.
But I do want to acknowledge and thank you for the land acknowledgement at the beginning of the meeting. I saw that written in the agenda as well. So, thank you all very much for including that. You know, any other way we can support as well ourselves and other members of the tribes that we work with and the Indigenous Education Now Coalition in LA County and across the state of California, I'm sure would be willing to help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, please. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. I just have to go back to the agenda.
Would you like it right here?
I move that we approve the memo of, or the approval, the memorandum of understanding with the, hold on, I wrote it down, CICA, Community Development Corporation. Do we, can we waive reading? You don't need to do it right?
No.
Great. As presented or no?
I only do that on resolutions that are mechanical.
As presented. Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Any questions for our guests?
Just thank you. This is an exciting partnership.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor.
Commendations on an amazing meeting.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries and our partnership carries for zero. 14C, approval of board repres-- oh, no, that's one we moved. Yep. 14D, approval of amended consultant agreement for childcare careers and the education team agreement.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Director of Elementary Education, or I'm sorry, I'll move the Board of Education. Sorry, Peter. Dr. Knappich. I'll move the Board of Education to approve the amended agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and Child Care Careers to increase funding to provide substitute coverage for childcare centers not to exceed $300,000 out of the designated account strings effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, and that the authority to sign the agreements be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR 3314 as presented.
Thank you for the motion. Do I have a second? Fight it out. Okay. Second by Ms. Ponzer Kamkar. I'm going to say that several times. Ponzer Kamkar. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. 14E, approval of first interim report for 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education to approve a positive certification of the first interim report for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferguson, second by Dr. Weisberg. Any discussion? Do we wish to?
We have a presentation.
I know it's late. No. Good evening, Board President Tabit, Board Cabinet Members, and those left. Thank you. I'd like to present to you the first interim report for the 2223 fiscal year. Before I start, I do just, I know I do this each time, but I really have to thank my team. I would not be up here before you presenting this without the amazing support and hard work that they did. And so, I really just publicly want to acknowledge our awesome fiscal and accounting and purchasing team. Thank you. And so, before you is the next cycle of the budget year. So, we brought to you back in June, the budget to adopt. And now, we bring before you the changes that have happened in the budget since July through October 31st. And if you recall, we did bring to you some of those changes that might be potentially happening in first interim at the 45-day report back in August. There were significant changes to the budget that the governor made by way of one-time revenue that we'll discuss, that you'll see the effects of that officially in our first interim report this evening. And so, yes, we do have a positive certification where by ed code, we are required to present the budget in front of you that we make, we are able to meet our fiscal responsibility, our fiscal obligations for the current year and the two out-years. And so, we do. We do meet our reserve for economic uncertainty for the current and two out-years. And so, before you, what you see is just a great visual of the revenues that we receive from various, various ways, various, from the state, from fed, federal, and from our local LCFF. Our main revenue is what we receive where you see the big blue part of the pie is our state-local control formula, where we receive that funding. Now, the biggest change that we had from adopted to first interim was the one-time, not one-time funding alone, but the recalculation of local control forming formula. Oh, my gosh. I've had so much coffee too. I'm so sorry. The LCFF formula where the governor, and I'll explain in the next slide, the governor augmented the LCFF calculator for us to receive additional funding through a three-year average. So, ordinarily, we are funded through ADA. But in this year and in the subsequent years, we now are able to receive our funding through a three-year average. So, in the next slide, I'll go ahead and I'll show you that the several different augmentations. So, we have our COLA, our cost of living adjustment, of 6.53%. But for this current fiscal year, we also received an additional COLA, an augmentation of 6.7%, which affects how we receive our funding for this year only, not the two out-years. And so, you also see down below the average daily attendance. What that entails is on the next slide, our LCFF revenues. So, I mentioned the COLA, but we have an additional benefit from ongoing provision allowing the average of three prior-year average daily attendance in the calculation of how we receive our state funding. The governor saw and heard our cries for help to the base funding. We kept receiving all this one-time funding, but we kept saying we already have declining enrollment. We need more ongoing funding. And he saw with the declining enrollment how if we took it by an average, the cliff that kept, that everybody kept seeing and we kept projecting now is no longer going to be such a massive cliff. It will be just sort of a softer landing. That allows us some freedom to be able to sit here and look at the budget more thoughtfully rather than reacting to the budget and looking at the cliff and seeing what needs to be done reactively, where now we can be more thoughtfully with that. And the significant changes also in federal and state funding that you see the differences from adopted to first interim is the COVID funding that we receive. We had anticipated that we would be receiving and spending that at the end of last fiscal year, but we anticipate still receiving about eight to nine million more dollars in COVID funding that we'll, that we'll also be spending in this fiscal year. Additionally, significant one-time funding that we will have a report now in January on is the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant and the Arts Music Instructional Materials Block Grant, about 1.6 million and 8.8 million dollars respectively in additional state funding. And then with each interim, you'll see we do receive wonderful generous gifts from our community for our school sites, and you see that in our local revenue. And here's a breakdown of all of the COVID funding that we've received. Over the last couple of years, due to the pandemic, the state and federal government have provided additional funding, almost to the point of $50 million in additional COVID funding for our district. And for the rest of this fiscal year, we have, we already have a plan in place that we've been working through, that we have about 8.7 million dollars left of that plan to spend. And so, as you see those revenues come in, you also see those similar, those same expenditures going out. Any questions so far? And so, now we hear, we are on the expenditures. So, you see the differences from unaudited actuels to adopted. We adopted less expenditures because we anticipated receiving less revenue. And then now with our additional one-time funding and with additional gifts as well as the COVID funding that we're due to receive, you see our expenditures go up from adopted. And so, these are some of the typical expenditure drivers that you see. You have our PERS and our STIRS. You will note, it's interesting that PERS goes, is up for this year, and then it starts to go down just a little bit with STIRS plateauing. There are actuarial studies that will be happening. And so, as those new percentages, if they change, we will bring that to your attention as a conversation piece. if they change, we will bring that to your attention as a conversation piece. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, working under, so with STIRS sort of staying where it is through '24, '25, is the assumption that that's what it's gonna remain, it's gonna remain that way, like we've?
Cap.
Right?
Right.
No. So, more surprises to come.
Right. And so we have the governor's budget coming in January. I haven't heard anything changing quite yet, but with each actuarial study that they have, those changes.
Okay.
We'll bring those to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. Another expenditure driver are, is California CPI, the cost of the Consumer Price Index. As you see in '22, '23, it's 5.75 with the cost of inflation going up. We try to make those accommodations with that percentage in the materials and supplies and the contracted services that we, that's how we project with that percentage. And so here's some details about the expenditure changes since first, or since adopted to first interim. A lot of the certificated and classified salary changes are due to one-time funding. You'll also see additional hourly and daily subcosts that went up to help with various different programs. And with the additional funding that we received for transitional kindergarten, you also see that we have vacancies now for TK aides. I think what is great about Capitol Outlaid this time at first interim, we received some wonderful gifts for Miller and Brett Hart and Edison. Miller's redoing their auditorium right now, and they're working through refurbishing and replacing their seats. Brett Hart received a kiln, and Edison is replacing their marquee. So I think that's so exciting. Any questions? And so, as part of presenting first interim to you, is also to show you that in the two out years, that we are able to continue to have our 3% reserve for economic uncertainty. And we don't quite make the board economic uncertain, the additional 3% that the board requests. However, as, this is what the great thing about a multi-year projection is, we can look at what our income is coming in and our expenses going out, and how we plan and adjust those accordingly in order to reach that additional 3%. Some of the challenges with that multi-year projection that you see before you is the one-time funding does go away. And so we have to look at, looking at how we can plan our budget in alignment to the continued revenue that comes in. And we also, there's something that we have been putting out on our social media, and I know that we've been talking with our Director of Food Services, is how to educate the community on every, about the meal applications. It is an amazing thing to have universal meals for all of our students. However, there's so much funding that is tied to the application that families provide to receive that, to receive free and reduced meals. And so the education of being able to say that it's more than just a meal, it provides additional federal funding for technology and other supplemental funding to the district. And so that's a challenge that we're seeing, is that our unduplicated count is going down, although it's, it's a catch. We're having, we have that wonderful universal meals now. And then the final challenge that we have are just staffing shortages that we're seeing, where we, our agency costs are rising in special ed to, in order to fill the vacancies until we're able to hire permanent positions for those vacancies. Any questions? Thank you for your patience with me.
You were wonderful.
Thank you.
A couple of questions.
Yes.
Have you heard gossip rumors, you know, all those other things that we all hear?
The tea, as my daughter calls it?
Yes.
Spill the tea.
Okay. And of course, now I can't find it. Books, 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 and you called it something else.
Materials and supplies.
Yes.
Yes.
Funded by lottery funds?
Yes.
So there was some gossip conversation.
Okay.
About our recent increases in, in the lottery, people buying exorbitant amounts of lottery tickets would increase funding, or would increase what schools were getting. You're not seeing that?
Not yet, but that adjusts annually.
Okay.
And so it's a per pupil amount that we receive for unrestricted and restricted lottery, and that hasn't changed yet. But as that changes, we'll bring that to you.
Please.
Absolutely.
That was kind of a--
It's a great question.
Kind of a big deal.
Yes.
I had another question, of course, that went out of my, that'll be good to see, because I know we have some need.
Yes. I know we're in textbook adoption season right now.
Yeah, and--
Yes.
Who knew?
Let's celebrate that.
I celebrate.
We meet again.
I'll think of it, I know where to find you.
That's okay, you know where to find me.
That was a big one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. And congratulations.
And to your team.
Nice to see.
Yes. Amazing, wonderful team. Okay, so we still need to vote? Yeah, I just can't remember which. Fourteen E. Do we have a motion? Did we do that?
We already did it.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries for zero. Approval of minimum wage increase.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I'll move the Board of Education to approve the minimum wage increase to 1550 per hour as mandated by the State of California, effective July 1st, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Ferguson, and the second, Dr. Weisberg. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. Acceptance of gifts.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I'll move the Board of Education to take formal action, accepting the following gifts to the district, and that the Board President convey appreciation to the donors.
Thank you to all of our donors.
Is there a second?
Oh, I jumped right in. Second. All those in favor of approving the gift report, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries for zero. Thank you very much. Now I can go. Thank you very much to our donors. It's greatly appreciated. Our donors this month include the Black Bow Giving Fund, who wishes to donate to the district $384.62 to be used as needed at William McKinley Elementary School. The Black Bow Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $576.93 to be used as needed at William McKinley Elementary School. The Black Bow Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $384.62 to be used as needed at Dolores Wirtham Middle School. The Black Bow Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $2,000 to be used as needed at Dolores Wirtham Middle School. JMMSP TSA wishes to donate $500 to be used to purchase PE school equipment at John Muir Middle School. Cooler Waters Productions LLC wishes to donate to the district $4,000 to be used as needed at John Muir Middle School. Sean Monahan and Heidi Wolken wish to donate to the district $250 to be used for the cross-country and track and field teams at John Burrows High School. Burbank High School Baseball Boosters wishes to donate to the district $1,650 to be used to pay coaches stipend for Robert Hart, Anthony Secone, and Max Hadad at Burbank High School. Burbank High School Baseball Boosters wishes to donate to the district $3,700 to be used to pay coaching stipends for October for Melissa Sanchez and Daisy Beltrum at Burbank High School. Burbank High School Baseball Boosters wishes to donate to the district $3,700 to be used to pay for coaching stipends for November for Melissa Sanchez and Daisy Beltrum at Burbank High School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation BAF wishes to donate to the district $674 to be used to buy graphic novels at Burbank High School. Burbank Arts Education Foundation BAF wishes to donate to the district $4,000 to be used sixth through 12th grade English and CTE district-wide. Palli Institute Inc. wishes to donate to the district $8,859.37 to be used for material supplies, field trip fees, and school supplies at Theater Roosevelt Elementary School. Gohar Stamboyan wishes to donate to the district $10 to be used for field trip at Ralph Emerson Elementary School. Burbank Employees McKinley Staff Fund wishes to donate to the district $150 to be used as needed at William McKinley Elementary School. Boone Supply wishes to donate to the district $4,206.10 to be used as needed at Thomas Edison Elementary School. Miller Elementary FRC wishes to donate to the district $60,000 to be used for materials and supplies at Joaquin Miller Elementary School. Edison Elementary FRC wishes to donate to the district $16,000 to be used for outdoor science school at Thomas Edison Elementary School. And that is all our gifts. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated to all of the donors. Now, consent agenda. We had one to poll.
President Tabit.
Thank you, sir.
I will move items 15A through 15C, poll 15D, and then move 15E through 15AB.
Thank you.
So basically, everything but 15D.
Right.
To make it simple.
Thank you very much for that.
I appreciate it. Second.
And a second by Dr. Weisberg. So all those in favor of consent agenda 15A through 15--
C.
C, and 15E.
K, B.
Through AB?
Yes.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great. Motion carried for zero. Now for 15C.
D.
D. Thank you. 15D.
I will move--
I have a motion.
I will move approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of November 17, 2022.
Thank you for that. Now, I guess I will, can second, because I was here, and neither of you were.
Actually, then, if Ms., if, excuse me, if Dr. Weisberg is not participating, then we don't have a majority to vote on this.
You are correct. So we'll have to move it to the January--
If you participate, if you review the minutes, or watch the meeting.
Oh, I totally got flack for that a few meetings ago, so--
Yeah. If you didn't let Mr. Ferguson do that, then I don't feel comfortable voting on minutes.
So could we, could we please move that to the January meeting? Consent agenda. That.
Thank you.
That did come from Ms. Clark, trying to be helpful, so don't--
Just--
Just move there. No double standard. All right. Request to address the board. Are you, I heard, there's one more.
Someone who--
Someone who, Mrs. Abasta wanted to address the board the second time, so this is that spot. Is there more than one? Nope?
He's actually first.
Oh.
No, go first. Sorry. Mr. Schlossman's first.
Mr. Schlossman.
Are you, are you up too?
So we have three. Technically, you're the only card in my hands. The rest are, just got turned in and are coming down.
You know, districting is coming. It's coming here, it's coming for the city, and when I heard about it, I was the first one to volunteer to be the lead plaintiff, because I feel ignored here. And particularly during that tax deal by the superintendent, boy, I was really ignored. And I found out that repetition, it works. So that's why I talk about the things I do over and over. If you do the things over and over again, I'll talk about them over and over again. That's my prerogative. Okay. And I think I have a voice here that should be heard. I'm a taxpayer, okay? Got four kids, and because of the spacing of the four kids and the participation in the fax program, I'm involved here for 20 years. And I think that this districting thing, you know, it's expensive to run for office. I know you didn't spend a penny, but it is expensive for, whether we're talking about city council, or we're talking about district, it's expensive to run. And I think that this will lessen that burden, and we'll get better representation. Ms. Weisberg, you know, I think you use your position as your, as a, kind of like your personal soapbox, really, for the things that are important to you. And I think it's, 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 it's not appropriate. I mean, we're here really for the kids, and that should be the focus. And you've taken that focus away with your, with your little thing, so. Somebody called in and said, you know, that, that me talking about your sitting for the flag salute is racist. Now, I'd like to talk about that a lot. I'd like to be educated a lot, because I don't get it, how there's a nexus, a connection between those two things. I'm talking about patriotism. That's all. Talk about patriotism, and being a good example for the kids. That's all. You know, it's bigger than me. It's not, it's not me. And, okay, well, we'll get to that. We need to know who's who, and I'm guessing that you've been following what's going on here in the past meetings. And a number of months ago, the board members did a dirty trick, not to you personally, but to whoever was elected, because what they did is they extended the superintendent's contract before it expired, and gave him a retroactive pay raise. And that's a slap in the face to you. You should have been part of that decision, or whoever got elected. I mean, it's not, they, we don't know who was gonna win, obviously. But that's who, it's Ms. Tabit did it, Mr. Ragakaniyan did it, and the person you replaced, Fritter did it. And I thought that was just horribly out of place, okay? Disaster tourism. I learned so many new words here. You know, you're the one doing this kind of stuff. Yeah, I learned woke, I learned dog whistling from the, I had to go and look these words up. I admit it, I don't know everything. I don't know these words. And you talk about me being on TV and liking to see myself. I don't have Twitter, Facebook, or any of these other types of things. It's just me, and I do not talk about you behind your back. I stand here and I tell you my feelings, okay? It's my right to redress my grievances with my elected officials. Do you get it? I feel something's amiss, and I'm talking about it. That's all. I mean, I'm not, you're giving yourself grandiosity. You are not in my head, but I'll talk about it over and over. Believe me, I'm not focusing on you, I'm focusing on these actions that you do that are horrible, horrible examples for our kids. Okay? You know, that veteran says, oh, do what you want. No, the veterans I talked to, you weren't here for the meeting, but I'll bet you watched it on, on, on the video. I talked to veterans, yeah, I talked to veterans, and they were the exact opposite of that. And I said, well, will you please come down here and talk to her and tell her how you feel about it? And they said, no, I'd rip her throat out. I said, whoop, that's a bad idea. We don't want to do that. But that's what they, they were adamant about that kind of stuff. They said, this country was made for you. That's what, that's what one fellow said. This country was made for you by guys like him. So people do take it seriously. This guy, I don't know, I don't know anything about this guy. These, these speakers, the ones, the fellow that was sitting here, the student representative and the young lady that was here, I heard what they said, and I heard it in the first person. I didn't hear that they were talking about rumors or repeating it. That's what I heard. Maybe I heard them wrong. And if I heard them wrong, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm thinking to myself, call 911, this is a big deal. That's what I heard. So I wanted you to know that that's what I was thinking, that I heard it. So, and you talking about me speaking four times again, it's, it's okay. What's wrong with me speaking four times? You know, you don't want to hear me? That's on you. I don't know what's funny about it. I take, I take, I take this podium, podium very seriously, and you should too. You don't have, we don't have to agree. You know, I'm not, I'm not giving it much more thought beyond that, so. Good night.
Thank you. Diana Abasta, followed by Eric Carter.
Eric, before me.
Oh, my apologies. Eric Carter, before Diana Abasta.
Good evening, President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, Board Member, Staff. I just wanted to speak about the electoral changes that are coming around that were, that would have been in discussion. I started in 2018 with some of you who may remember, I know Mr. Ferguson, I talked about it, about changing our voting system here for our school district, and we're looking at a ranked voting system. Instant runoff voting, which is a term that we used to use, it's called preferential voting in Australia, which the entire country uses. Ireland uses it as well. At that time, we were talking about single transferable vote, which is used for at-large districts, and I think I sent many of you videos of examples of how they use it in all these different countries around the world. Now that we're talking about districts, I, one has also seriously looked at doing an instant runoff voting or ranked choice voting system for our district elections. or ranked choice voting system for our district elections, since we're probably going to be moving that way. I've already started a discussion with the City of Burbank, and I've been referred to their Charter Review Commission. Just recently, the City of Ojai just passes. It's one of the first in Southern California. However, they went from a district system to now an at-large system using ranked choice voting. So, they kind of went the reverse direction for whatever reason. And I just got the actual law from the City Clerk of Ojai, which I'll be passing on to the new City Clerk of Burbank, so that she will have that, so she can reference it, and also the Charter Review Committee. But it's just something I want to say, keep in mind. It's a by far more democratic system of voting. Right now, if we go districts, and if a candidate gets 40% of the vote, but it's more than the rest of the candidates, you know, 60% of the people didn't vote for that person. So, we want to look at a fair, more democratic voting system than a winner-take-all, which is a system the United States inherited from the British, their first pass-to-post system, which we implement everywhere. Many jurisdictions throughout California have switched to a ranked choice voting system, and a lot of jurisdictions in other states have been doing it as well. It's been a gradual change. We had a conversation with Dean Logan, the registrar for voters for LA County in 2018. And he said he can do it as long as there's a rule that the jurisdiction says this is what they want. So, Ojai has just now done it for Ventura County. And I think Burbank would make a great example of how this can be done for the rest of LA County, be one of the first jurisdictions in LA County to do it. So, it's something I want you to keep in mind, and whoever that message has to go to for the Burbank School District to put that as part of the consideration along with the possibility of doing seven members as well as going to districts. With my two minutes left, Dr. Weisberg, just a story to share with you and some of you. You may not know, I come from a very strong military family. I was born on a military base in South Carolina. Was raised on a military base in Texas. Temporary transfer in Ohio to Wright-Patterson, back to Texas, and I was on military bases till I was 21, when I moved to California. My mom, who married a military man, her sisters all married military men. So, all my uncles were all military men. My dad's sisters, all married military men. So, all my uncles and my dad, all veterans as well. So, when I went with my dad on a family trip, because he's from a very small rural town in Western Ohio, where everyone there were all veterans. So, I was 21. I was now legally able to drink. He said, "You're going with me to the VFW," because this is where all the men go, to the VFW. And the topic came up about people standing, sitting, saluting, putting their hand over their heart and so forth. And I asked my dad what he thought. Of course, we're sitting at the bar with a bunch of vets, all with their beer and cigarettes. And I'll clean up the language that they use because especially for my uncle Ray, who was on a battleship in World War II. My dad said, "You know, your Uncle Willard," which is my dad's oldest brother, "died fighting the Nazis." And he said, "You know, do you know what those people made their citizens do? They had to prove their patriotism. They had to stand when they were told to and salute and do their chants and so forth." My dad fought in Korea and Vietnam. And he said, "And I fought those damn communists. And do you know what they tell those people to do? They have to prove their patriotism all the time." He said, "That is not who we are. That is not who we are. You have the freedom not to do those things. That is a democratic society, a free democratic society." And he reminded us, and all these veterans there at the VFW all agreed with him, that the moment that people start questioning patriotism in this country is the moment we start losing our democratic society and our free society. So, Dr. Weisberg, you do you. You owe no one an explanation, whether you stand or sit, because it's none of our business at all. And if someone has an issue with that, they can talk about it with their therapist. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And finally, Diana Abasta.
Good evening. Please bear with me. This has been probably one of... I don't even know, like, free... I have no words. From Elation to starting off with our young people, you know, it's nice to see that classics withstand the test of time. You know, you have Jose Feliciano, Feliz Navidad, Louis Armstrong, and what a wonderful world. I cannot get enough of that. And so, as classics, we understand the value of literature, music, plays, and so forth. But then it became one of disgust and disappointment. My name is Diana Abast, and I'm an English teacher at Burbank High School. And I'm also the president of the Burbank Teachers Association. Thank you for not having to go over the one-time funding because that's the reason why I was here is because through Rep. Council, there are some major concerns regarding positions that are being asked to a secondary... I can't even think of it. And an HR director. And so, you know, these are the things that come up, and we never have money for anything else. It seems like to our members that it's easy to fund these positions. And right now, we're in negotiations. And so, I know that I spoke to Laura Bowman from CSCA. And so, I'm glad to hear that, you know, things are going well. We're hopeful that custodial instructional aid and food service wages will reflect competitively for these employees. So, I was glad that that was pulled because I'll just email you and let you know what the members are saying regarding these positions. I know sometimes everybody's overloaded and worked, and who wouldn't want an assistant? I know that my special ed teachers want time. And every time we ask for time, there's not enough. Ms. Tabit, as a leader myself, I have to say how disappointed I am. You set a tone. We were looking for something new, a new beginning, a refresh. And I just found that to be a little self-serving on your part. And it was a lack of respect for the colleagues. These people, there's protocol. I'm a believer in protocol in institution. And this is how we have always done it. And so, I also hope for Ms. Campcar, who I welcome you today, that you're new, but there is such a thing of respect for protocol in institution. And I hope that if things like this come up, maybe we need to have some board policy regarding what would happen if that seat was not filled. And so, I would like to see this be... I just, I cannot believe that this was something that happened today. And all the times I've come, we've always had this meeting where the next person became president and vice president. And it was a great way to end the year, thanking everyone for their service and a new breath of fresh air, which is what we so badly need. I think you heard from A to Z the things that we need to all address. So, I'm hoping that in January that we will start and that you will recognize and hopefully better judgment on your part. I want to thank Mr. Cantwell for spending time with us. He came to the BT Office and went through the first interim. And so, the only thing I want to point out, and maybe this is something that you will explain, is the money that's been assigned that really isn't going to be spent like on roofs and textbooks and technology. That's $7,900,000. So, maybe that can be explained so that you understand, you know, just what the ramifications of that are. I want to thank Mr. Frittner for his years of service. Of course, I want to congratulate Kimberly Clark. I mean, the city is definitely going to win. And also, Ms. Cindy Ceterio, who is going to be stepping in. I don't know if you know Cindy and her story, but she is an amazing woman. And maybe sometime she'll share her... I'm very proud of all that she has done. JBHS graduate. Mr. Maxwell, I want to thank you. This man is amazing. I don't know why he gave me his number and said I could call him 24/7, but I took him up on that. And immediately, we had rooms that had no heat, and the kids were cold and so forth. So, I called Mr. Maxwell, and right away, we had a... Mr. Ogawa was a part of the conversation. And we started to sort of brainstorm. And it's like, well, the manufacturer's not returning the call. Where's the manufacturer? What can we do in the interim? Get some heaters? Oh, I can sort of jury-rig it. Sorry, to get the heat to go on. And in the meantime, did all of that. And so, today, it was just so... I appreciated so much because our members and the kids, it was just such a good day. And I know that we do have other issues. I know you're going to... I'll send to you regarding heating. So, maybe during the break, I'll ask Mr. Ogawa if he can maybe do some checks at other sites. I know that Dr. Knappik is saying that you did some site. And so, that way, when it comes back, we don't wait until the kids are in the class. So, again, I just wanted to thank you. And I wanted to thank Ms. Casao. We have four new educators going to a conference this coming weekend. I mean, like, I just got to give it up for these new teachers because it's a long year, and they ride that wave. So, we have four educators, two from JBHS, one from BHS, and one from Edison going to this new educator. It's a weekend. And it's so great because they get to be around other new teachers who've been teaching like one to three years. And it also shows how we want, we value, and we want to retain, and we want these new teachers to become members of our community. I mean, there is something to be said about teachers in Burbank. I mean, they amaze me. Their whole career has been here. And, you know, 42 years that I have been teaching, and I've observed everything that you can possibly imagine in and out of the classroom. And I just, I have to say that my colleagues are some of the most... And I'm not just saying that selfless people, who if you go by on a weekend, you're going to find cars in all the parking lots with those teachers in the rooms, working, giving, day in and day out. So, I'm sorry. I know that I rambled. I appreciate you just giving me this time. And I wish everybody every happy, healthy holiday. Thank you.
Okay. Oops, I packed up too soon. Tonight's meeting?
Ms. Tabit.
Oh, yeah. I was just ready to go home, wasn't I? I was going to adjourn in Mr. Nazarian's name, yes. All right. Alexander, yeah, I wrote it down. I will make sure. I was looking for my sheet to have it out in front of me. Thank you.
Ms. Tabit, I can respond to...
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tabit. Thank you to the speakers to address Ms. Abasta's question about in the ending balance. If you recall, for the public, when we adopted the budget and we did our 45-day adjustment to the budget, we went over the 10% ending balance threshold that the state had. So, we had to assign some ending balances. So, you see in the multi-year forecast of the slide presentation, $7.9 million was there. Some of that was for HVAC repairs, technology. As we did the first interim, we went to that third year out in order to meet the 3% and partial, not we didn't even get to the full, 6% of the board went there. We had to take those items out. So, you're seeing them in year one and two. But if we spend them in year one and two, that third year out goes lower. And so, that's what she said. They're there now. If we're having an emergency in the next two years, we'll do that, but we're going to have to address it in the out year.
Thank you to Mr. Carter. I know that, I think Mr. Ferguson told me that Councilmember-elect Perez and Councilmember Schultz have been talking about ranked choice voting. So, it sounds like the conversation is already being had. And I think most of us who have followed Burbank elections over the past few cycles are excited about the possibility. Thank you to Ms. Abasta, as always. And a huge thank you to Ms. Clark. I look forward to seeing you in all of the different places. And a big welcome to Ms. Ceterio. Is that right? I'm going to work on it so it doesn't sound so awkward. But Mr. Ferguson had some really lovely words to say to you. But, you know, we're here to help and support, and we're pretty grateful to you for what we know is a very difficult job. And you have big shoes to fill. But luckily, she's right down there if you need her. So, thank you and welcome. That's all we got.
Thank you to the additional speakers. Thank you, Ms. Abasta. Nice to meet you. I am looking forward to hearing from you on the one-time funding. I'm interested in hearing what you have to say on that. And thank you for the comments about ranked choice voting. I'm very excited about the report that we got from Council tonight about the move to districts. I think the more we can make this a more democratic process, the better. It was hard to run a campaign that was citywide. And I don't know that it was the most democratic way to do it, right? So, I'm looking forward to these changes myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who came down. Mr. Carter, yes, remember those conversations. And it looks like we've finally hit the threshold to do that. So, you know, I think it's a fantastic thing for us to explore. I think, though, that if we're doing ranked choice voting, frankly, and with five people representing, you know, 100,000, 110,000 people, I don't know how democratic it's going to get, even in districts. You know, if we want representation, we've got to commit to it. And it looks different. It feels uncomfortable. And most importantly, it's going to require education and real connection to this community. So, appreciate it. Ms. Abasta, thank you, and thank you to the teachers. I'm thrilled to hear more positive feedback coming out at facilities in particular. You know, we have an oversight body for a reason, specifically assigned to facilities, but it seems like it hasn't been working in the right way. So, it's good to hear that staff is at least becoming more responsive. And I think it's important that as we move forward into the new year, we're having conversations about appropriate oversight that allows us to make sure that this is not a reactive occurrence, but instead, once again, a proactive way of doing business in the district, that we are proactively anticipating these things, that there is good management and good oversight. I believe in a system of shared governance, which the community college system is structured by. It's one that, you know, is... They quite literally talk about it. It's called the Noah's Ark model. We have two from the academic senate, two from classified staff, two from the teachers' union, two from admin, and two from teachers. In order to get anything done, you have to build consensus. Right now, if you look at our board agenda, there are eight, nine, 10 different committees. One committee meets in the morning one month, in the evening another month. And how is the public supposed to follow any of that? We need to simplify this. Also, most of these are superintendent-appointed committees. So, if... And there's no Brown Act requirement with it, and there's no public notification of it. So, for those who don't feel that their voices are a part of the decision, it's they don't feel that they're going to get appointed to these committees. It needs to be board-run. We're a big enough $200 million institution to be publicly accountable. And, you know, it's going to take courage. And from time to time, bringing up these things, yeah, it's going to ruffle some feathers. It's pretty clear where relationships stand. We'll see what happens in January when we have a full board. But, you know, we're all here in service. And at the end of the day, we've got to prepare this institution for the future. And if some folks are kicking and screaming about it, oh, wow. These kids are worth it.
Thank you for all of you staying to the bitter end. It's greatly appreciated. It means you care.